Welcome to the Board of Supervisors Special Board Meeting this morning on January 31st. We're having our governance meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Start with a moment of silence. Does anybody have a moment of silence?
Yes.
Oh, we have to do Bruno thing first?
Okay.
Okay, so we have one supervisor who is participating remotely and we have to have a majority of the board present. Is that, that's correct?
That's right, and the member who's requesting to appear remotely under AB 2449 will tell your board and make a statement in public of the need to participate remotely for just cause.
Okay Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair and rest of the board, since Saturday evening I have been under the weather. I am still not 100% and do not feel it's appropriate for me to be in the chamber with all you guys, but would love to be a part of this meeting today, and so I'm asking for you to approve just cause for me to be in this meeting virtually.
Okay, comments from the board?
I agree.
Okay. From the public? Is there anything in Zoom? I don't see any hands up in Zoom. Okay, I'll bring you back to the board. Do we need a motion or consensus, or how does this?
I think consensus should be fine.
Okay, so do we have consensus to continue with Supervisor Sabatier remotely? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I should just notify, and I'll be speaking to the board about this particular measure and some Brown Act information at upcoming meeting, but in the interim, each board member has two opportunities for a just cause teleconference appearance under 2449 in any calendar year.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will start with a moment of silence. Does anyone have a moment of silence?
Yes, I have a moment of silence.
Okay, go ahead.
Lost a community member in Middletown, a long-term community member. He's 96 years old, Don Johnson, and I just want to give condolences to his wife Sydney and his family in South County, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I also, I think we can take this moment to remember Ty Ray Nichols, his life, the heartbreak his family is going through, and how we as individuals in a nation are affected, are affected. Thanks. Sheriff Howell, will you lead us in the pledge?
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So we have public input, but we don't have public input on the agenda. So the person, Elaine Brown, would you like to come back next Tuesday? Okay, and we'll have a regular meeting and then we can hear your public input then. Okay, thank you. We are going to have our, our governance workshop today. I'm happy to see so many of our department heads here. We are aligning all of our work with Vision 2028, as most of, as all of you know, and we're halfway through. We've got five years left to go to 2028, so I think this is a moment to kind of track some of the things, the priorities we've been working on. And I feel like this is an exciting point in the year when we get to set our priorities for 2023 and move forward in alignment with Vision 2028. And we have Matthew Rothstein to continue with the welcome introduction.
Good morning, board members. As you'll be aware, in January of 2018, the county hosted a series of five community visioning forums to gather the public's priorities. One forum was held in each supervisory district, and as a result of that public process, the Board of Supervisors adopted 10 key priorities for the next 10 years as the county's Vision 2028 statement. Consider and promote the well-being and economic resilience of every Lake County resident. Maintain a transparent county government that is responsive, efficient, effective, and fair. Continue rebuilding and all efforts to recover from our recent disasters. Enhance public safety, encompassing protecting our residents and serving them well. Develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness, and recovery in collaboration with all community stakeholders. Grow our economy through focused economic development. Next slide, please. Clean up our neighborhoods through code enforcement. Foster a business-friendly environment. Pursue funding to strengthen communities. Market Lake County as a premier California outdoor recreation destination and advocate for Lake County's needs through targeted political action. Improve our infrastructure, encompassing roads and transportation, water and sanitation, and internet access for all. Support the county's workforce through targeted training, retention, and recruitment initiatives. Collaborate with tribes, cities, and community groups to maximize opportunities. Care for our county's defining feature, Clear Lake. And finally, invest in Lake County's richest resource, our people. Provide pathways for our youth, leading to bright futures living in Lake County. Encourage volunteerism, service, and action toward the common good. And recognize the wisdom and experience of Lake County's senior citizens and serve them well. In the intervening years, county department heads and staff have been hard at work implementing the community's vision. And this morning, a series of departmental updates will be presented, beginning with administration. Thank you, board, for hearing these presentations, and we look forward to your board's discussion later today as well. And now it is my privilege to introduce Susan Parker, County Administrative Officer.
Thank you, Matthew. May I? First, I want to thank everybody too for being here today. It's a different format than we've had before, so I appreciate all the work that you put into your slides and, and making yourself available for today. And I'll begin because I'm going to stay, stick to the five to seven minutes. So as far as our 2022 accomplishments that fall within the Vision 2028 goals, we did fill the Chief Climate Resiliency Officer position with Terri Logston, and she has begun her work on gathering the information for Climate and Resiliency Plan. We did create a housing-focused and a economic development-focused DCAO positions with support staff. In fact, we are, our second round of interviews next week for the Economic Development position, so we're really looking forward to bringing that back to the board, a strategic plan for economic development, and also a comprehensive housing strategy. And that would include, in addition to affordable housing, workforce housing. I'm also excited to share, we're in the early stages of a broadband implementation, development of a plan. We have retained a consultant. We have received some grant funding for our fiber mapping, and we have some money set aside for this consultant. I would say within the next eight to 12 months, we'll present a plan to the board and those next steps on moving forward. And we hope they can be the project manager too, but we'll, we'll find out if we, they can do that, because it's, it's going to be a very large project for the county. Let's see. We did establish Juneteenth as a lake holiday, and we also updated the policies and procedures manuals. That's not very exciting, but, not as exciting as broadband, but we did do that. Next year, we also hope, in addition to the two strategic plans, we hope to adopt the Community Welfare Protection Plan. And that's probably one big hurdle that I'm sure there are plenty of people here in this room that would like to see accomplished. And that's all I have for today. I'm more than willing to answer any questions, or if you have any comments, feel free. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Did anyone time?
From the board, questions or comments? Okay, I think we'll take public input at the end of the presentations, so we'll move through to our next department head, Agriculture, Weights, and Measures. Wherever you feel most comfortable.
Morning, Board. Catherine VanderWaal, Agricultural Commissioner and Sealer of Weights and Measures. So our 2022 accomplishments within the department, we were able to fill the Deputy Agricultural Commissioner-Sealer position with a person in-house, Sam Upton. We co-hosted a cannabis Waymaster training with the California Department of Food and Agriculture's Division of Measurement Standards. Topics included Waymaster Regulations and Requirements, Proper Documentation, Approved Scale Types, and Scale Testing Requirements. And our next accomplishment, in December, we resumed our in-person pesticide applicator continuing education courses. These courses provide a pathway for license renewal for Lake County and regional applicators, as well as keeping applicators informed of any regulatory changes statewide. Can skip to the next slide. So 2023, moving forward, some of the things we're hoping to accomplish is fill our vacant Ag Biologists Inspector position. This will allow a better workload distribution. And to co-host an educational workshop for the cannabis industry with the Department of Pesticide Regulation, focusing on all pesticide laws and regulations that they need to comply with. That is the end. Does the board have any questions?
Questions? Supervisor Green?
Just.
Put your hand up. Thanks.
Just to comment, very appreciative to see the outreach involving the cannabis industry and have an ag on board, and these two industries are very closely related, at least on the cultivation side. So I want to, I want to give all due praise for this willingness to host these types of trainings and looking forward to a future direction in that way. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have Air Quality Management District, and our department head is absent, so C A L?
Yes, thank you. Next slide. Thank you very much. I'm going to, just briefly, he talks about the ambient air quality, the grant programs, I won't list them all for you, it's on the screen, and staffing. They've had, they've been successful in filling positions. Next year, they can continue with the air quality standards, upgrading monitoring station and automated, automation of data processing, implement an updated fee, fee rule, increase recruitment efforts, and continue to ensure local needs are considered by the state as they implement new requirements and regulations. He did share with me a statement he would like read into the record. "As we maintain our attainment status, it is a key benefit to providing economic development options in Lake County. Failing to meet air quality standards will trigger significant costs to industry and residents, as well as elimination of exemptions for agricultural operations in certain on-road trucks, as well as other industries. All costing significant expenditures to come into compliance, so maintaining our clean air status is essential for economic development." Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the board? All right, we will move on to Animal Care and Control.
Good morning, supervisors. I'm Jonathan Armis, the Director of Lake County Animal Care and Control. So this last year, we were able to get awarded three grants totaling $169,000 with a target to community programs, including like our Community Cat Program and a salary towards a veterinarian, which we're still working on trying to get potential vet to fill that, but it should help relieve some of the pressures we have. All of our applicable officers that we do have on staff, including me, my deputy, were certified with the State of California to be animal control officers with the state. And then we pivoted over to full-time employment equivalent positions over like 12-plus 900-hour staff, which has helped us provide consistent care to both the public and the animals that we care for. And then we also extended our outreach to the, the community. We were able to go to a whole bunch of events, like concert in the park. We did mobile adoption events this year. We did trucks on the track and, and I'm forgetting one, but for our emphasis this next year, we really, we need to fill the veterinarian position. We know we're on a time crunch. Our current flat will probably be leaving soon. And then filling our two vacant officer positions, which we're conducting interviews right now, hopefully within two weeks, we'll be able to conduct those and, and fill them. We're also going to be exploring contract vet services more. Been working with an RFP with Stephen and Admin to shore that up, and then also trying to find full-time vet, if there's any interested. And then, again, the two vacant officers, we want to get on, hired, trained, and the resumption of services with that, including the Community Cat Program, low-cost spay and neuter. We are still doing vaccination clinics, and then also our on-call after-hours services so that if something happens over the weekend or overnight, that we are available. So if anyone has any questions or comments.
Does the board have any questions? I, I am curious if any adoptions came out of our board chamber visits?
It's hard to tell. I think it's, it is a good thing for us to do when we have the staff available. It, it's just hard to tell. Right now, throughout the state and the nation, we're seeing that every shelter, regardless if it's a municipal or a rescue, is taking in more dogs than they can place, about 10 to 20% on average, and we're no different. This last year, our live release rates did go down due to that in total, so it is hard to tell.
Well, when you are fully staffed, we would love to have you back.
We will bring them.
That was really great. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I just had a question, like, I think in regards to like the cat program, or either that or spay and neutering and whatnot. Is there like any type of initiative where you're working with, maybe a nonprofit or someone in the community that has a group that does that work while you're, you know, doing all of the hiring or anything of that nature?
The difficulty is, there's a shortage of veterinarians, so it's more of the, the capacity to provide those surgeries. There was just a, a study conducted in the state, and it was something along the lines of like 40% of the state is unable to provide surgeries to animals through rescues or, or municipal agencies. So it, that's more of the choke point in our ability.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Assessor Recorder, but is he?
He's unable to meet with us at this time, but we're going to bring him back later in the day.
Okay.
If possible.
Auditor Controller, County Clerk.
Good morning. So, well, let's see. So the accomplishments, the Auditor Controller, County Clerk's Office for 2022, so a contract automation project, that's step one of something that could potentially be much larger, could eventually lend itself to going into the document management software that the county recently acquired. But at this stage, that means all contracts have been scanned and all payment processing is electronic, so it's not in paper files anymore, which is big for us. The second one, resumed wedding ceremonies. And so that's just a, that's just a fun thing we get to do in the middle of a, of a very serious day. We also marry people, and we are almost always booked, especially during the summer. We're booked months out, so it's pretty neat to note that. And then third, prepared for transition and leadership, which was huge. There was over 40 years for me to try to download, and then what spilled over, I took a ton of notes, and then at this point, just looking to the support and resources offered by the county, so as we move forward. And so then, for points of emphasis, I, I have two slides for points of emphasis. I couldn't narrow it down. So the first one is more from a technical aspect. Addressing challenges with decentralized contracting processes. So continuation of the contract, the contract project, as I mentioned. So it could include countywide indexing and then streamlining the process overall, and that's something I look forward to assisting with as we, as we have more discussions about it. Second is implementing new AP software, so Accounts Payable, that's our check-writing software. The RFQ is already done. We're about to select a vendor. We're down to two, and that's going to happen, I'd say, in the next 60 to 90 days. And so as we do that, we're also going to explore other possibilities as far as electronic payments are concerned. And then third, improving report writing capabilities. Not one I have to tackle. There's a lot to that, but it's definitely a goal, because I know it will help everybody throughout the county. And then, so this point of emphasis is a little more of a big-picture view, just continuing the great work started by Kathy, your board, the county, and the focus on employee retention. So continuing to support the amazing team that I have now. Training and exploring resources that are available are kind of where I'm going to start, but just the focus on hanging on to this really great team that we have. And then secondly, business process efficiencies. So your board recently approved the clerk doc software, and so that's also going to be implemented in the next couple of months. And the two main efficiencies that I'd like to point out are, one, fictitious business name statements. That's something that the public often wants to search for, and right now they have to call our office, and someone has to answer the phone and search and give them an answer. They're going to be able to go onto the website and search that for themselves. And then secondly, the marriage license application. That's going to allow them to fill it out at home. The information will populate when they come in. It'll just streamline the process overall for obtaining a marriage license through our office. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Supervisor Green?
It is super quick, and I think I know the answer, but because of the specialized nature of many of your processes, so I'm assuming there's not one, but several proprietary software packages that you're using in there and that you're expanding your use in in '23. But, but I know the county as a whole now has Laserfish available and stuff like that, so some departments may be able to leverage that and do some workflows. So without putting you on the spot, is this all proprietary all the time as far as your workflows and your software packages, or is there some opportunity to develop some workflows in-house that could leverage this kind of baseline, the Laserfish availability we have now for, for scanning documents, storing documents, stuff like that? And if it is putting you on the spot, I apologize.
I'd say the majority of the software we use is pretty respective to what we do, but the Laserfish, that's where, we had already started trying to automate the contracts when that committee was getting together to meet about the document management software. And so now that we have it, I do believe that this can align to where contracts will end up in maybe a software that anybody throughout the county, if they have access to Laserfish, they'd be able to look at the, the contract as well. But that's going to take a lot of coordination and so forth, so it's, that's more of a dream, but I do think that that won't be proprietary, that part of it, the contracting part, because that is something that, you know, the other departments, that we could share the information. There's potential there.
Supervisor Crandall?
Glad to be of service to conduct weddings this year.
Wednesday afternoons, if you're available. We do them right here.
I've done three so far, but they've all been off-site.
Okay.
Paperwork in, so yeah.
We did do a few in the park across the street. That was fun, so.
Did one at the county park, and then over on the, on the lake, two on the lakes. That was pretty.
Oh, really? Nice. Yeah. Well, welcome to your first presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Behavioral Health Services.
Good morning, board. I saw this slide come up. I thought maybe Genevieve was going to do this for me, but I'll do my best. Todd Metcalf, Behavioral Services, good morning. So we have a few things to share, our accomplishments from 2022. We, we recently established a suicide review team. As some of you may or may not know, Lake County in the state of California has one of the highest, if not the highest, suicide rates. And so we, we made up a team. It's comprised of the Sheriff Coroner's Office, staff, and invested and interested community members. The team is going to meet very soon. They will be meeting monthly to review deaths by suicide, and as I said, that they will be conducting their first review next month. And what, what the goal of this is, is that the team will identify existing systems, level what's working and what's not working. And so once we get some data together, we will be coming back and presenting to the board of supervisors the results of that. Excuse me. So we've also expanded narcotic treatment program services by being the first in the state to establish a contract and payment process with the first tribal 638 clinic provider for these narcotic treatment program services. You've heard me, we've, we've presented to the board before around this, and this was done via contracting with New Life Clinic in Ukiah, so, which the board recently approved, and we're excited that we have been able to expand those services. We are also one of a handful of pilot counties entering into a new electronic health record system. You've also heard me talk about this. It's slated to go live March 1, and we are very excited about this because it's going to help us improve our data and reporting outcomes. We've struggled with the system we've had for years. It's very clumsy and archaic, and we don't get, well, what's the old saying, garbage in, garbage out. We're not getting, we're not getting the information that we need, and we're also not able to capture billable services like we should. So we're very excited about this, this new, this new system. This also will incorporate the California Advancing and Innovating Medical Initiatives, which I'll talk a little bit about here shortly. Homeless Outreach Van. Oh, we, oh, sorry, I'm still going on about what we've done. We've had the van for a while, but we're excited that we finally got it, I hate to use the phrase, tricked out. It's, it's, we've got one of those wrap things around it. I mean, it's got our logo on it. It's got the contact information. We have a regular schedule. We go around the lake. It's basically geared towards homeless outreach, and staff works with homeless individuals, providing access to resources and programs. We also hand out, you know, toiletries, socks, snacks, whatever we can get our hands on. And our schedule can be found on our webpage. It shows where, where the van goes, and the community has been very excited about it. We are setting the stage for CalAim Initiatives and Care Court, which you've heard me talk about before. We had to submit an implementation plan to the state as far as how we are going to be able to roll out these initiatives, and so I'm not going to get into all of that. Care Court, we're going to talk more about that, not today. It's, it's a, it's a big lift. It's a heavy lift, as is CalAim. It's affecting a lot of other departments here in, in the county. Right now, I just learned that the county of Los Angeles is wanting to overturn the legislation recently passed around Care Court, and I will keep the board apprised of that. But the go-live for Care Court in Lake County is July 2024, so we're, we're working on that. We're actually having a meeting this Friday to sort of iron out whose roles and responsibilities and what we're supposed to do. So our points of emphasis, we, again, in response to CalAim, but even before that, we were working on this, we're, we're working on streamlining, streamlining access to our services. You may have heard of the No Wrong Door approach. It's, it's sort of just pulling out all the stops and making sure that our folks have access to not only our programs and services, but other programs and services available in the county. to not only our programs and services, but other um programs and services available in the county. We are working on finalizing our strategic plan. Uh, just met with my team last Friday. And um we've created sort of a skeletal plan. We're going to uh have it vetted uh by staff um in the coming months. And I I plan to bring bring that back to the board uh to share what uh, what our goals and objectives are. We uh re- retooled our our purpose statement and we came up with a vision statement. So we're very excited about that. Expansion of youth services, um another CalAim initiative that we are working on. It it really will, uh, the the CalAim initiative around that is going to sort of expand and relax eligibility requirements to get folks um enrolled in Medi-Cal so they can receive the the services that that they need. Working with Supervisor Sabatier um around the future of some kind of a permanent homeless shelter. You know, we uh, we recently were working uh with a contracted service provider to open a warming shelter at Old Juvenile Hall, but that's just not the answer. It's it's a temporary thing. And so um hoping to bring something to the board. We really need to work on figuring out how are we going to solve this this issue? So that, you know, things are opening and things are closing. We need to figure out a a permanent solution. So working on that. Collier Avenue, um, still hopeful that ground may be broken uh in March on a forty-unit complex, which will serve uh folks experiencing mental illness, um developmental disabilities and low income. So we're excited about that as well. And our Clear Lake Clinic remodel. We recently received a planning grant to start work on updating that building. For any of you that have been there, um, it's in dire need of of a facelift. And so um we're excited that we got funding for a planning grant to have someone come in and tell us what needs to be done um so we can fix fix that place up. Um, we're also developing a career path training curriculum. I'm I'm proud to say our vacancy rate is fairly low right now, which is kind of unusual for a behavioral services department. But we're working on um developing um recruitment tools, retention tools, and sort of turning our department into uh a behavioral health training ground. So people will come, uh, we can train them up and hopefully they'll stay. So i- it's a work in progress, but we're very excited about that. And peer support site and staff certification. Our, we have multiple satellite offices. We call them peer support centers. And when I came to this department, I didn't quite understand what the what the term peer meant. Uh, we employ a lot of folks that have lived experiences, that have um have experienced or are experiencing mental illness, substance use disorder, um and or homelessness. And so what this means is that we will be able to expand our services in our satellite offices. We would get our peer support staff uh trained up and certified so they can um offer services on site that we can bill for, which would bring uh money into the department. So uh we're excited about that. And that, I think I've took too long. I apologize, but um that's what we've been up to lately. And more to come.
Great. Questions from the board? Comments? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so just a one uh comment or recommendation on the Collier, Collier Avenue. I've just, are there any initiatives to prepare for mental health services for onsite? Uh, mental health patients once that commences? Are are you working on that already or is that something you have planned?
Yes, there will be, there will be an office available uh Monday through Friday. It's it's what we call a supportive housing uh development. So uh there will be staff on site and not only uh behavioral health services. And I don't want to speak for any other departments in the county, but we're, uh, our plan is we will have staff on site, Monday through Friday, eight to five, uh for anything that folks there need. And we're hoping to uh get other community organizations involved in that, so.
The weekends could be.
There will be someone on site. And there will be, there will be a property manager on site twenty-four seven.
Will they be trained in like the mental health portion of?
That's a, that's a good question and I hadn't really even thought about that, so.
Okay.
I'll work on that.
Just throwing it out.
No, that's a great question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, well, you know, I always ask about the van. And I am just wondering if you have any um statistics or success stories from outreach and connection to services, especially for those of us that have big unincorporated districts where the people aren't, are are far from services. I'm just wondering if you have any of that to share.
I do, but I didn't bring it with me. I I apologize for that, but um, and our hope is, uh, as as you may recall, we were able to purchase that that van with cannabis funds. And we're sort of hoping that that might come around again so we can get another one. So um, but I I will certainly come back and provide you with the data that you're asking for.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have Child Support Services.
Good morning, Board. Gail Woodworth from Child Support Services. So as you can see by the slide, we've really been technology concentrating this last year. We've done a lot of upgrades to our system because we had, we knew things were coming in the future. And so along with updating our servers and all of our um antivirus kind of things, you know, trying to ensure that we have um good mechanisms to keep our information in our system secure. We were, we deployed um high-speed scanners to each of the staff. And then we also, and that was done in anticipation of our e-filing. So that kind of goes into the next one, which we really work and we've been working on streamlining our legal processes. And this year was so exciting because we were able to go and start using the state's DocuSign system that works with our child support enforcement system. And then right behind that came e-filing with the courts. And I can say the courts put in a lot of time preparing for us to be able to upload our legal documents and then um receive them back into our system. And this whole process is, it's not just days, it's weeks that those two processes have saved us. In fact, we had one case where um a DocuSign went out to one parent, the other parent, and we uploaded it um to be filed with the court in less than a half an hour. So when you have parents on board, you know, with a court order, it can go really quickly. And so that, we feel, is really going to help our efficiencies in, as we collect child support. So um our point of emphasis. So one of the things we continue to work on is um opening more cases. And a lot of that has to do with outreach. And so, of course, with COVID, a lot of our outreach simply went away. So we're getting back into that and hope to be out there a lot more this year because people need to know what we can do for them. And and people tend to think we're um child protective services. And we're not. We're child support services. We establish paternity, child support and medical support, and then enforce those orders. So the state looked to some of the small counties and saw that we weren't utilizing Facebook and those kind of things. And so the state actually took over and has implemented um Facebook. And then we'll be doing Twitter and Instagram, which I know nothing about Twitter and Instagram. So I was happy that they have people on staff. And with our input, they're going to be doing those things for us. And of course, we continue to work on staff development. I think cross-training is vital um for the growth of staff and for succession training. The state now has what's called uh Blockboard. And it has um over two hundred and seventy trainings are available. And then we also use Skillport at LinkedIn and we have our in-house training. So it keeps us busy.
Okay. Anything from the board? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And next we have Community Development.
Good morning. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Department. I wanted to take advantage of my five to seven-minute slice of the pie to highlight our management team. Uh, so I dragged down with me our chief building official, Bill Collins, our cannabis program manager, Andrew Immlung, and perfect timing, our code enforcement manager, Marcus Piltramo. So we're going to kind of tag-team our presentation for you today, starting with building and safety. I'll get out of this way.
Good morning, Bill Collins, Chief Building Official. Uh, so the last year, Building and Safety has been working on getting all of our inspectors more certifications. Um, the last year, we've uh certified each one of our building inspectors in a new discipline and both our plans examiners um as well. Our permitting staff is working to get certifications as well. And we have just recently gotten our first certified permit technician. We also, uh, we got the BSAGS rating this year, which is a lot of work on our, for our staff. Supposed to help with uh being able to get some uh, some monies through some uh grants and things like that. Took us uh, I'd say probably about a month of work, spent a lot of time working on that, uh, trying to get uh records, uh, numbers on accurate numbers for the records, things like that. The goal for next year, we still have more certifications we want to get for our permitting, uh, for our permitting staff and for our inspectors. And then we're also, we're working to get our uh records retention set up on laser, our laser fish. So we've actually sent out for our first bid. And uh so hopefully by this time next year, we will have all of our stuff scanned in that's actually sitting in the office right now. And we'll have a new procedure going to scan, scan intake and stuff as it's coming in. Thank you.
So we have a couple of accomplishments up there from planning, specific to the varied types of trainings that are ongoing for all of our planning staff, uh, as well as establishing a central staff person to watch over the public record act requests and the complaints so that those don't get lost. But what I couldn't fit in there uh was a little bit about cannabis. So I'm going to pass this over to Andrew.
Hello, I'm Andrew Immlung, the Cannabis Program Manager. I'm going to cover three main points. I have a lot of updates, but Mariaa kind of told me to keep it concise. So five to seven minutes, so. Um, with that said, uh, I'll break it down into three parts. The first one on concerning our pending applications. We have adopted a few new approaches uh with our applications, especially concerning our initial studies and our environmental review. Um, we've developed a new template that goes into more detail on all categories that CEQA is concerned with, not just what staff in the past had been focused on areas that we expect to have impacts and where we seek mitigation measures. Uh, we're also expanding on areas where we don't expect those impacts, but we're explaining in much more detail why, uh, with the hopes that we'll have much more competent conclusions on our recommendations. Uh, in addition to that, working with Laco, we have incorporated peer review on the hydrology reports that we are receiving. They have a hydrogeologist on staff who is able to examine those and provide an expert opinion on each one. So with that said, you know, our our conclusions, our recommendations for approval should be much more robust moving forward as the county has requested. We have completed all of our annual inspections for this year. Our staff did a really great job of getting out there. And for the most part, our approved projects that are operating are operating um with just a few minor issues. We have seen a few projects that did have some violations of high severity and we're exploring whether or not the appropriate course would be a recommendation for revocation of the permit. Uh, moving on to the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, uh, have been meeting with each of the task force members to kind of get their feedback on how things are going. Overall, everyone's pretty satisfied. They recognize there was a bit of a slow start in the beginning, but they are pretty uh happy with the progress and the approach that we are taking now. Um, we are currently concluding recommendations on ag-exempt and temporary structures. And we will next be moving on to address issues on retail sales as requested by this board. Um, following that, many of the members are looking forward to getting the opportunity to then get back to taking a comprehensive and holistic approach to the overall cannabis ordinance. And finally, we have grants. The Planning Division and the Cannabis Program specifically um is now overseeing a lot of the deliverables for the LJAG, the Local Jurisdiction Assistant Grant, as well as the Equity Grant from the DCC, Department of Cannabis Control. Um, with that said, I have been in touch with the California State Auditor. They're going to be conducting an audit for the first time this year on the LJAG, the Local Jurisdiction Assistant Grant. And furthermore, we've had some meetings with DCC concerning uh the Equity Grant and the LJAG Grant. And one positive note, they are looking for um, I guess, different recipients, grantees of the Equity Grant to highlight um those who are making a positive impact so far. They've only had a few cases from the larger cities like San Francisco and Los Angeles and Oakland. We do have a few candidates in mind, especially with what they're doing in terms of the environment. So we're hoping to be able to highlight some of them, but I won't get into detail because that's still all in the works, so.
I have a question. How, what does the backlog look like now?
Oh, yes. Well, we are currently at, as of my last update with the Planning Commission, the backlog isn't a whole lot different. We are about hundred and nineteen pending projects with two just recently approved at the last Planning Commission. We've had about six withdrawn and some of the other updates that I wasn't going to, you know, get into the weeds with. But uh we are taking um a kind of a simultaneous processing approach to where we were trying to focus on some of the older projects that have just been kind of hanging around and get those moved forward. Well, there's a reason they're old. They have a lot of issues. There's a lot of things with them that just, you know, keep stalling the project. And, you know, the feasibility of some of those are questionable. So with that, we've kind of divvied it up. We've dedicated a few staff members to get the ball rolling on some of our more recently submitted applications, especially the ones from last year that were submitted. We're noticing the more recent submissions are just, again, more robust applications and they've learned from past experiences. So uh they're, they're a little bit easier to move forward.
So we've had a number of recent submissions from two thousand and twenty-two?
Well, when I say recent, they're about a year ago.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
We're still addressing pro, I mean, I think the old, we still have a two thousand and nineteen pending application, which recently finally withdrew because they realized that, you know, the issues around it just, they were not moving forward. We have a handful that are still left from two thousand and twenty, and now we're getting into the two thousand and twenty-one and about twenty, twenty or so from two thousand and twenty-two, so.
That's a significant amount of applications for.
It is, yes.
Okay, that's interesting. And then just a follow-up question. How helpful was the satellite software this year?
Uh, it it played a bigger role in annual inspections and code enforcement. Um, code enforcement utilizes it for the most part. But uh with us, we did, you know, out of our hundred and nine approved projects at the time over the growing season this year, we had roughly between twenty and thirty that opted out of cultivating and another twenty to thirty that requested to reduce their cultivation square footage for their canopy area. And the software was uh pretty instrumental in determining that, you know, those figures that they were reporting to us were in fact accurate. And it saved a lot of staff time. We didn't have to go out to those locations. We could check via satellite for the outdoor operations.
Okay, great, thanks. Did anyone else have any, Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just very quickly on the, on the backlog. So we do have some newer applications, but just to clarify for everyone, we still have kind of a de facto roadblock in terms of any new applicant must have a water board permit as of whatever that cutoff date is.
Correct, yes. We have discussed this with the task force or, I'm sorry, were you?
No, that's fine.
Okay, um.
Yeah, I'll just plow ahead. You're way over five, so backlog, yes. Still a hard stop as far as those people who don't have a water board permit hanging around for three years plus. So progress to be made on opening up avenues for new applications. And that's just it. I wanted to highlight, not only is there a backlog, there's a hard stop on new applications unless you have that prerequisite water board permit in place.
That is correct. And of the backlog, I do, I would like to point out, out of, you know, roughly about a hundred and nineteen at this point pending applications, nearly half of them, I believe fifty-two at our latest count, are still deemed incomplete. They haven't submitted all the information that we need to move those forward. And we're, you know, our current ordinance doesn't have a mechanism like the state where if in ninety days we don't receive anything or we don't hear back from you, in a hundred and eighty days, they close the project. We don't have a mechanism to do that. So we are, you know, working on approaching, you know, reaching out to these applicants, exhausting every, you know, possibility of moving them forward and then potentially bringing them forward with a denial without prejudice so they could come and resubmit and pick up where they left off. So that uh, that is a big factor, so.
Great.
Yeah, and and last thing on that, and don't want to put words in anyone's mouth. And and obviously, the task force is going to take the work on as it's being presented to them. But uh, we have, I have had anyways, some preliminary discussions with California Cannabis Authority, which is a more of a state-level organization. They may have some thoughts on how they may be able to assist. Don't want to box anyone in, any staff, uh, including our treasure tax collectors to the potential utility of that organization, but I do want to point out that it does exist. And when we get closer to that more thirty-thousand-foot level rewrite of the ordinance, I'd be interested in hearing some feedback on what. in hearing some feedback on whether that organization might be helpful to us. So thank you for that.
So Marcus is going to come and close us up with the code enforcement accomplishments for this year. Also, you'll note there are a few stats from the Roadmap Task Force. A more robust update will be presented to the board on the Roadmap Task Force in February.
Good morning, my name's Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division. Right now, we have four fully certified code enforcement officers. I don't believe the county's had that in the past. And by June, all our code enforcement officers will be fully certified. So we'll have the training, now everybody will also have the experience. So we're anticipating 2023 will be a better year for code enforcement. We've grown over the last year. We've learned about Lake County. In the code enforcement world, each coach, each jurisdiction is different, and Lake County is unique. And so we've learned the uniqueness of Lake County and how to deal with those, so we look to be more proficient moving forward. Also, we're getting mobile printers and laptops, the equipment started to come in, we're starting to install it, we're starting, starting to put implement procedures so that we can be more efficient also in code enforcement issues. We've also branched out and formed stronger relationships with our sister departments, Environmental Health, Water Resources, for example. We've strengthened that bond, we've learned to work together, and that's also helped us accomplish a lot more. And I think moving forward, as we get better, our sister departments get, we get better at working with our sister departments, we will be more effective moving forward. So our thing is just to get better, get more proficient, more efficient, and 2023, our goal is to resolve all complaints that are received. Another thing is educating the public, what information we need, how to file complaints, how to get in touch with us, and so that we can move forward in trying to attain compliance.
So I, I just, I want to make sure that the zone of benefit is included in the area.
Oh, I apologize. So the benefit zones, oh, once we work that plan out and we have an understanding, we will be moving forward, that will be a priority. That is something that needs to be done. We've reached out to Mike Ciancio and his crew over there as part of being part of that resolution to move it forward with that program, but that is a priority. So our priority issues, Roadmap Task Force, cannabis, all abandoned vehicles and RVs off the major roadways, and then the benefit zones. Those are our four priorities that we're going to be focusing our energy and resources to address those issues.
We can go to the next slide, please. We've already covered the code enforcement section. We'll move on to building.
That building, give on it.
Ah, building already did it too. Go to the next slide. I'm going to close up with planning, the exciting things that were coming this year. Already talked about benefit zones, that is one of our top priorities, and it won't just be code. Any support that I can or planning can lend in that to keep that moving forward is, is available. We have a number of advanced planning projects scheduled to launch in 2023. The housing element, as you may know, is due at the state by this August, so that's going to be our highest and top priority amongst all of the general plan element and general plan related projects. Additionally, we will start working on the climate vulnerability analysis. This is the survey that is going to inform our safety element. It'll also touch on the next local hazard mitigation plan through the Office of Emergency Services, and it helps to inform a climate action plan should we decide to launch that sometime soon. We are currently working on a housing-related zoning code update that is, that should be concluded later on this summer. We are working towards codifying the zoning ordinance in MUNICODE. The county code is currently maintained by, by MUNICODE Company, which I think they might have changed their name recently, but doesn't matter. Anyway, so, and, and it gets updated on a regular basis. All the ordinances that get adopted that affect the code get sent to them, so that keeps our website updated. This has not included the zoning ordinance ever, as far as I know. And that's why, that's why you have like a link to the code, but then you get this other link to the zoning ordinance, it's because it's always been maintained in-house. We're going to work on getting that sent over to MUNICODE so that will then come up to date and be maintained in a timely manner. And the rest of the year, I think Andrew already covered it, our task force is going to continue working on cannabis policy review. They've gone over a number of ordinances. Their next one will, their next focus will be on the retail regulations for review, and so hopefully we'll get something back to you in that soon. I wanted to just close with extending a thanks to the departments that we rely on every day for review of our projects. When I came back, we found that, that there were a number of systems that had, just, you know, with everybody being overworked and so busy and understaffed, a number of our review systems needed a little improvement. And so I am very thankful that the department heads have been so supportive in getting that back, because we really need their input in order to produce a comprehensive discretionary permit. I think that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Crandall?
Just one last question about the area plans. I know that we were looking at that. I don't know if this is, did you say that or did I miss it?
No, I didn't say it. Glad you brought it up. So what I'm working on is an RFP that I'll be taking to admin for their review shortly, and we're going to just toss in all the general plan related projects that we have into one big old enchilada and see if we can get a planning company that is staffed well enough to keep our projects moving forward in a very tight timeline. The area plans all must be updated prior to the general plan update to make sure that each community's vision is reflected and synchronized with the overall county vision, which is the general plan. So I don't know if we're going to get started on those area plans this year, but it is definitely within my five-year plan, all to be done by 2026.
And just to follow up with that, you had mentioned engaging the municipal advisory councils to help with some of the legwork and the beginning work.
Yes.
For those area plans.
I have an idea, and I'm not sure if it works out in reality, but right now in my head, it seems really cool. And that is when we get the contractor that's going to work on the area plans to actually sort of develop a checklist, because a good portion of each area plan actually contains data that can, that isn't vision, it's, this is our community, these are the things, you know, these are what we're highlighting, these are our things of value, our natural assets, things like that. So what I'd like to see the contractor do is assemble a checklist that will help to compile that data for every single area plan. It's going to be pretty standard. And then get those distributed to our town halls and our municipal councils, because I know that every community is very anxious about getting that area plan started as soon as possible. And so this would give them something that they could do that would then be helpful when we start coming to work on the vision part. We'll see if that works in reality.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Supervisor Green?
Just, just a quick thank you. Lots of slides, way over five, seven minutes, but I think that reflects the, the importance of CDD, and I just want to compliment Director Turner. Since joining, I think she has signaled a sense of stability and a can-do attitude, and after years and years of several bumps in the road and stuff like that, I'm very excited to see the current direction that CDD is under, and excited to see more coming in 2023, if only because I know in addition to everything on your slides, there may be one or two or 12 other subjects coming to you that were not anticipated. So appreciate everything you've put in here so far and buckle up, because I imagine 23 is going to be even busier than what has been presented here.
Thank you, thank you. And I welcome to all, everybody's questions. I didn't count that in my five to seven minutes, so I think I was pretty close. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And next we have County Council.
All right, well, thank you, Anita Grant, County Council. It's always difficult for County Council's office to point to a list of accomplishments simply because our accomplishments are assisting other departments. Some of those matters remain confidential. Some of those matters became very involved, and it doesn't seem appropriate to point out, well, this department we had to work with for six months, et cetera, so we don't do that. We tend to be quiet about our involvement. But you will see under this slide that there are numerous accomplishments, which I've just done by doing very bland statistics in terms of the type of work we do. A County Council's office is a generalist office, so we are involved in almost everything. And we draft contracts, we draft ordinances, resolutions, we review contracts, ordinances, and resolutions. And those reviews are not simply signing my name or signing a deputy's name on the bottom of the page. Oftentimes, that requires a great deal of work. There are legal requirements, there are issues with regard to compliance issues with various grants, et cetera, all of which we have to review and assist the departments with. In terms of just numbers of contracts, I've stated about 700 for last year. That's in addition to all the other work I do, the office does as a whole. Generally, I've been doing the documents because I, I think 12-hour days are normal, but the, the issues with regard to land use, we've got, I think, all of my staff, legal staff. We have one attorney, Nicole Johnson, who focuses on, on that primarily, and she's excellent, but all the attorney staff have a very good and solid understanding of land use so that we can pitch hit for each other. We found that to be very important, both in juveniles and probates as well, because for about half a year last year, my attorney staff was reduced by half. So for us, that's the same as if you're staffing any large department, just 50% of them were gone because people moved on to, to other things. We also were without a risk person for approximately eight months in '21, '22, and we had lost our, one of our administrative assistants for clerical several years ago. Your board was very good to give another position of attorney staff, which will be the first addition to attorney staff in 30 years, actually 31 years, it might be longer, but I only know 31 because that's how long I've been here. You'll see we're very busy with juvenile dependencies, which are abused and neglected children, a very important area of law, 25 probate and conservatorships, and complex projects, by those I mean those projects that require ongoing commitment of months, sometimes years, to bring to fruition with departments. So that is what we accomplish again. A thumbnail sketch without going into detail, your board generally knows everything we're doing, so certainly the information isn't lost on you, but again, the confines of confidentiality make it a little difficult for me to feel comfortable going into detail. As far as points of emphasis, as you know, I'm going to be retiring in a couple of months, so I don't really have major points of emphasis other than getting staff ready for that. Also, points of emphasis for us depend upon what your board and departments move forward because our office assists, helps, advises, counsels on all of those areas. We don't generally self-generate, we provide information to your board. One of the things I'll do before I leave is giving you some information on Brown Act updates and the Brown Act itself. We'll also be bringing, the office will be bringing a number of things to the board over the next couple of months that will hopefully set the stage for future actions. And again, I do, I mentioned Nicole, and I'm sitting here realizing that I have left out several lawyers, Lloyd Guentavano, who is the senior deputy, as well as Carlos Torres, who's handling probates, conservatorships, and anything else you throw at him. Ali Querfalian, who is handling the juvenile cases and has a great passion for the work, but she's hopefully just as passionate about all the other assignments that she has to do, because again, in our office, one of the most important things is to be able to pivot. So, and we do do that. I will say that when it comes to recruitment issues, the thing that my office focuses on, and I would think other offices may want to, is that two years, three years of experience in a county, in this County Council's office gives you a scope and breadth of experience that it would take you 10, maybe 15 years in a larger government office because you tend to be pigeonholed. Here, we can't afford to pigeonhole anyone, so all of us can do pretty much anything.
Thank you, Anita.
Any other comments from the board? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for joining the board. I work with DSS, CWS, and managed to attend many of our juvenile dependency court hearings virtually, and it's an important job, and it was news to me that it was part of County Council's office. And so I want to highlight the hiring of Aliq as a dedicated counsel for juvenile dependency to be a major accomplishment. I have seen lots of pivoting before her hire, and I imagine more pivoting will happen. I just want to highlight the, the vital importance of the juvenile dependency process. I appreciate the work that's been done to solidify County Council's contributions to that. I hope part of that will be advocacy to systemic change. I think part of the difficulties I saw during my time there was just there aren't enough court days, there aren't enough attorneys. So just as the County Council's office needed to dedicate resources, I hope the Superior Court and those people that are tasked with making sure that the juvenile dependency process runs smoothly as a whole will be sensitive to the concerns that Lake County has. We need more court days, and, and that's it. Thank you very much for everything you've done. We'll do the little happy dance for your retirement later on, but everything that your office does has been spot-on, high-quality work, no matter what I've seen, no matter the subject. Thank you so much for your contributions.
Thank you very much, Supervisor. And other than when we were drastically reduced by staff, people don't necessarily stay for 20, 30 years anymore. They, they'll leave after four or five years, which is, which is to be expected. But we've always had an attorney dedicated to, to juvenile. I think that, again, over the last couple of years, because of staff shortages, there was more pivoting than, than the office had ever, ever experienced before, and certainly not something that we want to continue. So we'll continue with that dedicated.
Supervisor Crandall?
Well, definitely won't be doing a happy dance because you, you've covered so much since I've been in the position, and I appreciate everything you've done as a quarterback for, for that office, and I think the 49ers could have used you this last weekend.
All right, thank you, Anita. And next we have District Attorney's Office.
So, let's see, there's my slides. I think I'm the only one that did color. I, I spent a lot of time on that. So accomplishments, of course, successfully prosecuted several high-profile murder cases that resulted in significant prison commitments, and, and that includes not only a trial that lasted several weeks, but also settlements that resulted in a very, very significant terms, but also in every case that we settle, especially in murder cases or attempted murder cases, or any crimes of violence, we reach out to the victims and make sure that they understand why we're doing what we're doing and that they are okay with what we're doing. Sometimes they're not really happy, but they understand why we have to settle certain cases, whether it's, you know, lack of being able to prove beyond a reasonable doubt, certain cases because of evidentiary issues. But the good news is, is that our caseload for pending murder cases is drastically, has been drastically reduced, and I hope not to have new ones, but that's beyond my control. So we have a, a mental health court now, and this is new with the courts, started last year, I believe. And our focus is, obviously, we attend those, that court hearing, we advocate for the protection of the victims' rights, and to make sure that if there is going to be a mental, an individual is going to go into mental health court, that the victims is protected with a protective order, that there are, that the cases are monitored so that if there is a violation, it's is a violation, it's brought back right away as soon as possible. We're still working on that because there's still some procedures that the court is working through. We are there to serve the victims, so, and we, our priority is community safety. We are, obviously, our victim witness office is part of the DA's office, and we provided victim services in 2022 to 1,443 victims and family members. And that is an increase of, in 2022, that's an increase of pre-pandemic numbers of 892 in 2019, so it's significant increase. And our staff did a phenomenal job of assisting these individuals from going to court with them, victims going to court through arraignments, from arraignments to motion hearings to sentencing, where the victim has a support person there for them. And they can call victim witness and ask questions about the process of the case. And so the victim witness advocates are so important. We also conducted 58 forensic interviews of children at our Hope Center, and these are, these are so important because it's a safe space for these children to talk about what is the worst thing that has ever happened to them. And we have a phenomenal forensic interviewer whose experience has been doing a lot of these and does a great job, so I'm happy that we were able to do that. We also included in that number, we've done a couple of interviews for agencies outside of Lake County, cases outside of Lake County, and then they have, other counties have done some forensic interviews of victims who have moved to another county. So in 2023, well, we, this is an ongoing theme with every department, but we continue to recruit full-time to fill positions and provide training and experience to develop happy and satisfied employees. And I think that we have been, in 2022, we, let's see, hired two deputy DAs and other personnel. We emphasize the experience that the, and an individual get when they come to Lake County in the DA's office, especially deputy DAs, they're going to be in court right away. We emphasize the fact that if you're in a bigger department, you're probably going to be doing motions and not get to court very often. We emphasize that. We have a new deputy starting in mid-February, so I'm excited about that. But we need to continue to recruit, and I am going to try to set up a partnership program with some local, not local, but some of the surrounding law schools to try to increase recruitment for Lake County. We continue to work and will work with law enforcement, with a new sheriff, the new chief of Clear Lake Police Department, and of course, Lakeport Police Department Chief, and CHP and Fish and Wildlife. So we have a good relationship with all those departments. We are going to look into upgrading our case management system in order to keep better statistics that are going to be required by the state in five or six years, but we need to work towards that. I also want to upgrade our management system so we're more easily can file things with the courts. They switched over to a new court system, so we want to try to be more compatible with them. And so that's going to be an ongoing thing, not just in 2023, but 2024 and 2025, to get the right system in place. And we will continue to work with mental health court, and maybe I would, you know, suggest to the courts, meetings, monthly or quarterly meetings, so we can get those procedures down faster, that they, if somebody's going to go into mental health court, that's done quicker than later, so that there's no, not a big delay in terms of those individuals getting into court, especially when you're dealing with mental health. They need services right away, they need to be under the court's direction quicker, and also for the victims, they need to know that that's going on so they're not left hanging in terms of what's going on with that case. So that is my presentation, and I will take some questions.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I, you know, I wanted to emphasize the, one of the bullets that say work with law enforcement to make our neighborhoods cleaner and safer, and I know you've been to some meetings with me with some neighborhood watches and been dealing with meth, of course. And I know a lot of state laws that are intact that, you know, hinder handcuff both you and the sheriff's department. But just wanted to, you know, highlight that a lot of the drug houses are connected. Meth is the root contributor to dumping cars, RV, catalytic converters, occupying homes illegally, public nuisance, theft code violations, and an overwhelming burden to your department and law enforcement, which, you know, once they're let out, it's recidivism. So I really want to work to assist any way we can, in any type of legislation on our end that can help give you anything. You know, I know I'm working, I've talked with code enforcement on different angles to try and, you know, just, I think one of the things is when anyone's dealing with nuisances as such, making them uncomfortable as well. I know that a lot of it stems from mental health, so I just, I just highlight it because I know it's a lofty situation. But I want to do what I can to help because it's really, it's really a big deal, and I know in my district and others, but I'd get, I found different areas, that's why I got the Flock cameras, where they, they're connected in different towns, they go to different areas. So just letting you know, I really want to work with you and the sheriff's department in getting some of this, at least in a position where we can start from or something like that. So I don't know what you have in mind yet, but I think maybe we should set something up to try. And I know the task force is something that's intact, but, you know, so, just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you. And definitely, I agree, we definitely should meet, and I am a member of the task force, and I'm looking forward in this new year to continue with that, as well as, you know, other, obviously, the whole of Lake County needs to have changes and so that we can get rid of bait places that are, you know, cleanup places so we can get people to come and visit Lake County as a safe place, a beautiful place, it is a beautiful place here.
Right. And I think too, it's just the meth situation, they get let right out, you know, and so if there's something else we can work on to charge some of these folks with, of course, we have to have the burden of proof. A lot of communities are willing to work to provide that, of course, if it's unbiased. But, you know, I just think that there's, those are the angles that need to be used in order to, you know, slow it down, if that makes sense, because then keeping them in a position where they have to get sober and, you know, and, you know, look at other things.
There's a lot of issues involved there, including the, you know, the changes in the law in regards to individuals. A lot of, a lot more individuals are being released, if ones are picked up, even on warrants, even if they've failed to appear previous times, a lot of them because of the changes in the law and case law in regards to keeping people in custody on bail, especially for just possession of drug cases. That's one big issue that maybe we can work together to try to figure out how to deal with that, because it is very frustrating when you have individuals who commit not only possession of drugs, possession of drugs for sale, but also the other associated petty crimes such as theft, vandalism, other things, that we try to keep individuals in custody on those, but we can't. And then they commit a new offenses once they're out. So even before they have gotten to court on their first case, they're already have committed a new case, so.
And that's where it's at, yeah.
Yeah.
I just know that a lot of community members are in a position where they're like, they know that the, you know, our DA's office and law enforcement is, your hands are tied, so they're like, well, we only have ourselves to deal with it now. And so it's like getting close to that, and I just see what we can do in order to prevent that, so, thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate this report and highlighting the mental health court, but there's other specialty courts too. There's a drug diversion court, there's veterans court, and so a question doesn't need to be answered now, but the way state law tracks now in these various specialty courts, challenges implementing mental health court, we have care court coming down the road in a year or two. So one, very creative, and I'm glad to see the state take these adaptive measures for dealing with some of these difficult issues. Two, I don't know how much additional workload and how the changing standards of these various specialty courts create for the DA's office and our public defenders, not public defenders, but our contract defenders. It's a lot. And so you mentioned, like, there may be quarterly meetings with the courts and stuff like that, but I'm looking for opportunities here, whether from the DA or through some meetings with the courts, to give us kind of a report card of where we're at. Because again, just tracking back the dependency works as best as it might, given the circumstances, but still room for improvement in my very amateur post, having worked with that. Similarly, we may have room for growth in these specialty courts, but without us tracking up there and, you know, observing things in very case-specific ways, it's hard for us to get a feel for how well things are working. But I suspect they might be similar to juvenile dependency cases. There may not be enough days, there may not be enough attorneys, definitely there's not enough judges to keep things rolling smoothly at all times. So whether it's through your office directly or if it's through some partnership with the Superior Court, I'd love to hear more about it and more often about how these various specialty courts are working and what challenges you may be facing in that. So thank you.
Great, okay. And I just have one more question. Each year, we talk about illegal cannabis, environmental crimes, and I was just wondering what your plans are for this year, if there's going to be anything different, if anything that you can share with us.
Well, we continue to prosecute illegal cannabis grows, and they're, you know, law enforcement goes in, eradicates, and brings us the case. We continue to file those. Those are mostly misdemeanors unless we can have, unless we have sufficient environmental crimes that we can prove to charge a felony. But we are continuing to prosecute those cases because it's important. If you have an individual who has two possession-for-sale of marijuana or two cultivation cases, convictions, then the third time can be a felony. So it's important to continue to prosecute those, obviously. It's not only, even if we can't charge environmental crimes, it is an environmental issue with those illegal grows. So we will continue to pursue those, and we do have several cases that involve environmental crimes that are still pending. Sometimes those take a long time to make its way through the court, especially with, if it's going to go to trial, you know, it's competing with other violent crimes. But we do continue to prosecute those.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And Health Services is next.
Hi, can you open?
Of course. And thank you for coming in during your leave time.
It's my honor.
Good morning, community and partners.
Cheers. So the Health Department is going through an organizational transition. As we are aware, there was a thing called COVID-19 that disrupted health departments globally, especially here in Lake County. And we're not out of the woods yet. COVID-19 is still here, prevalent, and our goal is to look into the future, right? What does it look like to shift, but still maintain?
Just maintain.
Still maintain. And so in this presentation, I'll outline some of our accomplishments and where we look forward to going to into the upcoming years. But first, we're halfway through the agenda for today, so I figured I'd throw out a cool glow. I have been on leave taking care of my newborn son, and I got a call from Mary, who was a labor and delivery nurse who was responsible for delivering my mother here in Lakeport. And she called to say congratulations for my son who was delivered here in Lakeport. So I'm seeing a generational trend here. So we'll see what happens with my son. But I always appreciate calls like that from the community. So without further ado, I would like to highlight some roles that we've filled in Like most departments, filling positions has been quite difficult, but I think it's the resiliency and grit of the staff at the Health Department to fill positions that we've been able to accomplish this list. So we've been able to hire an interim health officer, Dr. Carlos Spoor, who just hired a director of nursing, promoted a deputy of health service and promoted a deputy of public health, hired epidemiologists, a health equity coordinator, promoted a health service manager, and married a health services administrative manager. Pretty proud of that list for my staff and my team. Meaningful partnerships in development. Recently, jail medical services, WellPath, we were able to accomplish a $3.9 million contract to provide jail medical services. Now, this isn't done in isolation, this is done in collaboration with the sheriff's office, social services, and behavioral health. Hence on Mr. Metcalfe's CalAim initiative, we're looking at whole-person wrap care to look at revitism, how do we reduce that while still providing health so that when someone gets discharged, they're able to get full scope services to provide them the resources they need to be and continue to be a resilient and contributing member to our society. A license agreement with the city of Lakeport, something that many of us and many of you have experienced are hazardous events, fires, floods, lakes. We're always looking at how we meet and support all partnering agencies and people, especially those who are ADA. So this emergency medical respite center that we are looking to develop is going to provide a space for people who need potentially charging stations, places to go for electricity, the opportunity to have a space, a dedicated space, where they can come get those much-needed services. So if they have, for example, electric wheelchair, they can come charge it there if their electricity is down at their house. Same with breathing apparatuses, ventilators, et cetera. It'll do a couple of things, it will hopefully provide a safety net, but also provide a place for our first responders in our hospitals to be able to send people if they, God forbid, become at capacity and don't have the necessary resource to be able to provide that care. Something that I'm looking at is E. Cornell online courses for residents and staff, and virtual learning is, seems to be a new trend, not only in universities, city colleges, even for our staff. And providing an opportunity for public health education or CEUs credits for, whether it be community or staff, to get public health knowledge, administrative knowledge, tech knowledge, what have you, really leveraging E. Cornell to be able to provide Really leveraging E. Cornell to be able to provide those services. UC Davis and our DEI programming, annual programming for our staff, diversity, equity, inclusion, that's important. And I'll hand on it on the next slide. An expansion of our California Children's Services, also known as CCS, Diagnostic and Treatment Services, which I'll also elaborate how we're going to. One, you don't have to go back, but about meaningful partnerships, I just want to give appreciation to Hope Rising, Executive Director Justin Gaddy, for our CHIP and CHNA initiative that we're working on, Behavioral Health Social Services for their commitment and collaboration to wrap services in CalAim, and our Fire Department, Sheriff's Office, and Police Department for Public Safety and their collaboration to put an emphasis on health safety. So moving into further accomplishments. I referenced in the beginning organizational restructuring. What does that mean? It's very broad. But something that we're looking at is how do we give back time, right? How do we advance systems so that our staff can focus on what we're here for, which is community health, right? Treating the people. And so implementing a new electronic health record system. The team has been amazing at finding and executing an RFP and finding valuable solutions to improve efficiency and financial integrity. So it's timely, cost-effective, and gives back time to our staff so they can engage with community. Looking at that with our environmental health and our overall program. Another accomplishment would be our MOOC, our Medical Health Operations Area Coordination Manual. Several pages, the board has it, it's pretty dense. But it's how do we work together with our Fire Department, Sheriff, Social Services, and General Health to address mutual aid? So that we're not working in isolation, but we're working in collaboration. Again, that looks at cost-effectiveness, time management. Again, to ensure that we are communicating effectively so that the most important people, our residents, receive the care that they need. One of the choke points that we, as a team, established is if we're going to continue to have our department and county be as desirable as possible, which it is, we need to make sure that our onboarding processes and procedures for our Health Department and our staff are seamless. So when people come into our department and into our county, they know where to go, where the great places are to eat, where the great hikes are, how to log in, log out, and navigate the system so that when there is an issue or need for a staff member, they have direct sources on where to go to get that and they don't spend a lot of time in ambiguity trying to figure that out. So our team has put together pretty, very detailed onboarding policy procedure that's going through several levels of accreditation so that when a new staff member comes onboard, they have all the resources and tools that they need to navigate our health system. And just to highlight the general accomplishments around health, COVID-19, monkeypox, RSV, influenza response for our team in partnership with county CBOs and stakeholders has been top tier. And I'm really proud of the team and the community for stepping up to address that. So looking at 2023 and beyond, this isn't just a goal that we're looking at for this year. We're looking at this to be a staple for our department. Some of you may and some of you may not know that the APHA, American Public Health Association, and AMA, the Medical, or American Medical Association, they consider racism as a public health emergency. And so understanding that and the importance of just the fundamental, basic care that we need to look past external and look internal. Anyone who has a heart needs to be served. We're really trying to ensure that we place focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And when I say internally, externally, a standard for our staff and our service of care. And that's acknowledging that cultural competencies and health disparities as they relate to health outcomes and how they relate to the workplace. This is really important to me and I believe it's important to the Board and the community that we put diversity, equity, inclusion as our foundation on which we build as all staff and all community, they should be able to come to a place, especially for health, that they feel seen, heard, and valued. So continuing to improve our onboarding processes and procedures and provide peer and professional relationship building for our staff will be a top priority. And I'm hoping that, I'm confident actually, that this will increase staff cohesion and amplify our shared purpose and vision. And partner and build with On Community-Based Harm Reduction Coalition. Mr. Metcalf referenced a mobile van that goes out to provide service of care. And we have and are in discussions around how we can coordinate with our Health Department to provide a spoke care in that to address morbidity and mortality. And leverage CalAim to address health disparities, improve service delivery for a whole person care, and really focusing on partnerships and community-based organizations.
Okay, questions or comments? All right, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
And should we take a break? A five-minute break?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so we will come back at 11:51. I mean, 10:51, sorry. Come back here and start with Information Technology.
Well, good morning, Board. I'm Shane French with Information Technology. This year, as far as accomplishments, I would say the most visible accomplishment to both the public and to staff is going to be the new website and content management system. We finished up that project about a month ago in total. You know, the big motivation for that project was to allow departments to more easily update their content on the site. Obviously, the site, the old site needed a redesign. It was, it was getting pretty old. But, you know, the thing that I heard from a lot of departments was, hey, you know, it's very difficult to update the site. And that's really important in terms of messaging to the public. And, you know, updated content is becoming more and more critical every day as we go forward. So I think, you know, that was an important project for us and for departments. You know, departments now are able to get in there and update and keep their content fresh. And so that's been a really good thing. We did a lot of work to secure county information resources. Always doing that, obviously, it's becoming more and more critical every day that we respond and really be proactive about threats that are coming to us every day in the cybersecurity space. You know, I have on there continued support of secure network access. So obviously, we have a lot of folks working remotely, have since COVID-19. You know, that continues to be an area where we really need to make sure that we are, we have our due diligence done in terms of making sure that these resources are secure as well. Because obviously, you have folks working from home. It's basically completely outside our firewall. And so it's important that we employ advanced tactics to make sure that, that every device that's connected to our network, no matter where it's connected from, is secured appropriately. Another, you know, I guess, project that I'm really excited about, you guys have heard a few people talk about the Laserfish, Laserfish system this year. Departments are starting to use that. This is a platform for not only document storage and retention management, lifecycle management of documents, all tools we've, we've maybe had bits and pieces of in places, but never had a complete solution. We kind of have a complete solution now. And I think that's really exciting. And departments are starting to leverage that. And I think as we learn more and more about that, you know, you're going to see a lot of growth there in terms of our, you know, document management strategy, you know, maturity. I think that's, I think that's going to be an important piece for a lot of departments. The other thing that's really great about that is it does allow for, you know, a lot of workflow management. You know, we have, again, a lot of different disparate tools on our network that allow departments to do things, but a lot of them don't talk to each other. And so it's nice to have something out there that will allow us to, to have processes that allow departments to collaborate more easily between the departments. As far as points of emphasis, you know, obviously, I'm always kind of harping on the information security piece. It's just becoming a bigger and bigger part of the job of being an IT department. The threats that we face are just increasing, I would say, moment by moment. So we really put a lot of focus there. As far as, you know, I would say the biggest part of our job is the one that might not be as visible, which again, is just supporting departments in their initiatives. We just, that's where the majority of our time is spent because that's where the demands come. So we like to obviously prioritize those projects that departments have. And of course, just as I mentioned, you know, obviously, we want to expand that use of electronic workflows. You know, we started doing quite a lot of that during the beginning of the pandemic. And it's become quite the norm, I think, for departments now. And I think, you know, we're just seeing more and more of it. And I just think that, you know, having the right tools has, is just going to be a game changer for, for the county. And I think I'm really excited about that. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Comments? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just thank you for highlighting the Laserfish and mentioning the workflows. Exciting to hear some departments are starting to leverage that. Workflows don't invent themselves. The software isn't going to do that. It's going to be the department heads and staff kind of working on, oh, we have this brand-new storage system, what do we do with it? But I think continued diligence in doing that will be important. One thing you and I discussed during the orientation, not really highlighted here, is one, this ongoing need, constant drumbeat for security, and yet this kind of increasing accommodation, if you will, for personal devices and stuff like that. I think we'll probably have some, hopefully, room in the coming year to talk about that. We absolutely are facing very critical threats to our cyber infrastructure. Phishing, spear phishing for officials now, I've found out. But something has to give. So I do think there's probably a little bit of a disconnect in strong emphasis on security on our desktop platforms, but an unfortunate reliance on personal devices and the actual execution of our daily duties, depending on department. So just wanted to emphasize that. And with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more.
I just wanted to highlight, sorry. I just wanted to highlight, and I'm not sure if it's been put out, but there was an email from last week from, from one of the state representatives. And I won't go too far into it, but the main paragraph that I loved hearing was, "I've attended my share of BOs meetings in other counties, and Lake County stands out as being organized, intelligent, aware, engaged, and clearly there to serve the people. In addition, that you managed to keep everything running smoothly on Zoom and in person. It is stunning. This may all seem normal to you, but if you attend meetings in other counties, you will see that Lake County is at a higher level than most." And so I just want to highlight that because I know your department helps. Of course, I know Sam plays a big role. And so I just, I don't know if you were able to, you know, be told about that, but I just wanted to, you know, say that to you.
Well, I really do appreciate that. And, you know, I think Sam and Jake, my department, actually, they both do such a great job with the meetings and they really put all this together. And, you know, like that individual mentioned, it's, it doesn't work super great in a lot of places. So it really speaks a lot. And we just don't have the budget that those other counties tend to have. So, yeah, I mean, I really think that's well deserved.
Yet we're still above and beyond.
Yeah, do more with less.
Thank you, Shane. Okay, next, library.
I'm going to take a seat, if that's okay.
Come and join us.
So I'm Christopher Beach, county librarian. And the library's accomplished so much in 2022, and we plan to do so much more in 2023, but I boiled it down to these highlights. So in 2022, use of the library increased. Total checkouts of materials, both digital and physical books and other items, was 213, 980. And for physical materials, that, the library had 155,895 checkouts, which is a 12% increase compared to the prior year. And we also have digital checkouts continue to grow, and we had 58,085 checkouts in 2022. So that's a continuing larger share of our checkouts, but physical materials grows as well. So this increase in use is due in part to the resources and work put into refreshing and revitalizing the library collection, both with funding from your Board and all the work of library staff to ensure the library collection of materials is relevant and appealing to Lake County. Also, with library use increasing, attendance at library events has also increased, almost tripling from the year before. In 2022, the library hosted over 550 events with an attendance of over 9,500. So these are programs for children and adults, but the most popular programs are for children, such as our weekly Storytimes and Lego Club, among others. So children's events really have the highest attendance at the library, but we have, we have something for everyone. Also during 2022, we, with the support of a grant from the Institute, a museum and library services, we launched Books by Mail and started lending Wi-Fi hotspots. So Books by Mail provides increased access to the library for homebound residents. And this ensures that every resident of Lake County, regardless of their transportation, is able to use the library and receive physical materials through the mail. And we also started lending those Wi-Fi hotspots so members of the public can visit their local library and check out a Wi-Fi hotspot and take it home to access the internet, which has been very much in demand at our library branches. We also, in other library of things besides just books, we bought and lend additional Chromebooks to the public. And we have state park passes that people can check out a park pass to visit our state park for free. We also expanded our seed lending library from just Middletown to every branch of the library. So residents can check out seeds, grow them, and then save the seeds and return them to the library for other people to check out. And we also secured a number of grants in 2022, which we'll be working on in 2023. So in spring 2022, the library secured a grant for, from the state, for mobile library access, which will help us purchase a customized Sprinter van to serve as a bookmobile and outreach vehicle. And that should be here in March of 2023, very soon, if everything goes correctly. Library also won a grant to conduct a national endowment for the Arts Big Read Program, which is a federal grant. And this will occur starting in February 2023. Our next, our first event is this Friday. So go to lakecountybigread.com for our whole schedule of events that will occur during February and March. And we also won funds through the California State Library Building Forward Library Infrastructure Program. We've been awarded over $1 million for capital improvements at our library branches. Those projects will occur over a number of years. And this will fund projects such as adding solar panels to our three largest branches. If you want to move on to Slide Three. Throughout the upcoming year, our goals are to work on those grants to bring those additional resources to Lake County. As I mentioned, the bookmobile will be arriving this year. And we'll begin to work closely with Lake County Public Services and other departments to address the projects at the library facilities in accordance with that grant plan. And we also want to continue work on our library collection to ensure we have the books and other materials that Lake County residents need in the format that they prefer, whether that's physical or digital. We're really committed to those goals of the Board's 2028 priorities. And I really look forward to playing our part in moving Lake County forward in 2023. Thank you.
So I, you make libraries exciting. And there, there are comments out there questioning the relevance of libraries in our communities. But as we've gone through the pandemic, we have come to understand that they are communication hubs and they are centers of our communities. And the work that you and your team does to keep them relevant is so critical. And my family is a big library user. We use all of the digital platforms and we go check out books and we wait for them to. So I, I just really appreciate that we have been able to adapt and thrive. And our communities are definitely reaping the benefits of all this innovation that you and your team have brought to our library system.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? So next- So next, we have probation.
Good morning. I'm Wendy Amon Franz, the Chief Probation Officer. And the probation department had a successful 2022. We have a department full of employees dedicated to public safety and helping people change their lives. And one of our accomplishments this year was something we called resilient reentry. We worked with Woodland College to put together an all-day event where over 100 people in the community who were either justice-involved or formerly a justice-involved to find resources such as education, job hunting, and expunging their records. We had inspirational speeches, food, and it was a great event that we plan on doing annually with Woodland College. And we're working with Mendocino College to do one on this side of the lake. We also, during the summer, put on our Exploring Horizons summer program for juvenile youth involved. And we had 10 youth visit community college campuses, Sonoma State, they went to Job Corps, they had a visit with Cal Fire, they went ziplining, they went on the lake, they went kayaking. And it's something we've done for, I think, six years now. And it teaches the kids that are involved with us that there are other things to do besides committing crimes. Our third accomplishment was we created a new division in our adult unit, and it's called the pretrial unit. We contracted with the Superior Court to supervise those people who are released while pending trial, and we report back to the court on their progress. Most are ordered on electronic monitoring, and we supervised 80 individuals during 11 months of the year, and we wrote 175 court reports related to the pretrial program. And our accomplishment that our department did was we raised more canned foods for the animal food drive than any department ever has. We had, I think, I think it was over 1,000 canned food that were donated by our staff, and we were pretty excited about that. This next year, our biggest goal is to recruit more probation officers. We have been trying different ways to do that, creating videos, going to different sites on the internet, and actually networking. We get a new employee and try to get them to find their friends to come apply. So that's our goal there. We are also starting leadership training of our staff with the Dare to Lead program, and we've hired a facilitator to come and begin our succession planning. So the new leaders, the younger ones that are in our department can start moving forward. We have two grant opportunities that we're pursuing right now. The first is a mobile probation services center that will be a van similar to that that behavioral health uses to reach those that are on supervised release, that are homeless. And we can also use it at community events, and we should know if we receive that grant in April. And the last one is working with the Vera Foundation to end Girls Incarceration Grant. And right now, the past five years, our Girls Incarceration for juveniles is about 30%, and the goal of Vera is to reduce that to zero. They started in Santa Clara County and reduced it to zero long-term, and they have an average of about two in custody in Santa Clara after working with them. So it's our goal to do the same and receive that grant. Thank you.
Wendy, welcome.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you with us for this year. Do we have comments from the board? Not at this time? Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Public Services.
All right. Well, good morning. Lars Uing, Public Services Director. To highlight the accomplishments from 2022, the first bullet point, I believe it was up there, infrastructure management of over 100 county-owned buildings, a couple of dozen parks, and project delivery of over 1,500 projects. That's the first bullet point. It's focused on parks and buildings and grounds. Really, the emphasis there is the two dozen, about two dozen men and women that are out there handling these day-to-day, just the upkeep, the maintenance, the repair, the improvements at these projects. The bulk of what we do is not by contract. Maybe what is outwardly seen is by contract, but those, the men and women that we have working are exceptional. And that's where I wanted to start. A few of the examples from capital projects that really get the highlight because it's above and beyond the vacuuming and the, you know, making sure that the toilets are flushing. A few little projects, remodels at Elections and Auditor Controller. In this building, a courthouse fire alarm upgrade. Roofs on four different buildings, one that is in progress here on this building. Parking lots, about a half a dozen this year, numerous HVAC replacements around the county. So that highlights some of the projects that we did. The next bullet point there is countywide building energy audit and building condition assessments. That was a big push, two separate pushes, but they are interrelated. The energy audit identified that in a very unique situation that our county buildings would not qualify for something that these companies would do for an energy savings contract. And that emphasizes the work that our staff have done, their forward-thinking to get LED lights put in, to get more energy-efficient HVAC systems put in. So that's a testament to their expertise. The building condition assessments, that will be the basis of developing a maintenance management program. Essentially, it's taking the data from that evaluation and putting it on paper for what a management plan will be rather than just institutional knowledge. So that really is going to be the springboard for that maintenance management plan. The next bullet point, Parks, Recs, and Trails Strategic Master Plan that is in development. Last week, intended to give an update to the board, but the board meeting went long. That'll be going on next week, so you'll receive an update there. But that strategic master plan is in development. And kind of related to that, the next bullet point there, a feasibility study for multi-jurisdiction recreation center is ongoing. That is in concert with the two cities and other school districts around the county. Efforts are continuing, and I'll be coming to the board to present that next week. The next bullet point, landfill and diversion operations. So essentially landfill. Talking about the landfill operations, similar to what I said about the county buildings and grounds and park staff, the bread and butter of what happens at the landfill is what happens every single day. Those six landfill operators and two waymasters, we've handled about, they, not we, they have handled 55,000 tons of waste from over 50,000 individual vehicle trips. So those are very big numbers. Those are normal numbers. Trash doesn't stop, and they keep going. Diversion, diversion means we're trying to keep out of the landfill what shouldn't be in there. A few highlights there, mattresses, over 7,500 mattresses taken in and recycled. And that's a relatively new program that we signed up for. Tires, nearly 8,000. Oil, 10,000 gallons of oil and about 5,000 filters. These are round numbers. But it just emphasizes the need to keep out of the landfill what shouldn't be in there so that not only can we save the life of the landfill, we can maximize the resources, the finite resources that we have. The last bullet point up here, museums, museum exhibits and tours, both physical and virtual. We may think of the museums as a place to go physically, which they certainly are. In-person visits, we had nearly 5,000 in-person visits among the three museums. But something that you may not be aware of, and we need to emphasize this more, and that'll be one of the points of emphasis for next year, but the digital exhibits that we have, we have nearly, I believe there's nearly two dozen digital exhibits that are available, and they have individual visits of over 7,500 last year. So that's, and those are our small little staff at the museums, they've created those digital exhibits, and they're very high quality. I encourage you to take a look at those. So looking ahead at the points of emphasis for next year, broke it down into the four general divisions that we have. So facilities, projects, that's the all-encompassing point of emphasis, project delivery. I highlighted a few, well, two, that are kind of the bigger projects. One is the Armory Conversion. The other is a courthouse campus parking lot solar array. So those are in the project development stages. And others, you know, there are plenty of others that I could go on a laundry list of. But I also included in there deferred maintenance. I believe I did. There it is. So deferred maintenance. There are, we actually have some funding from the board for deferred maintenance. So that is progressing. Few projects maybe to also highlight jail generator and security electronics is in progress. Roofs, I mentioned, the courthouse is in progress, but we have about a half a dozen other roof replacements this year. Other projects were already mentioned, behavioral health, that their South Shore facility, libraries, numerous projects there. So it's a very accelerated project delivery that we're hopeful for. We have, Public Services has really ramped up our project staff. I don't mean the construction staff, I mean the project management staff. Historically, that was handled outside of Public Services. We have built that up, and I hope to have some support to build that up even further because the projects are not slowing down. Parks and trails, improvement projects and planning for the future, a few projects that I wanted to highlight. One, I touched on the master plan. That continues. Here in the next month, we will be coming to the board with an update on the status of that master plan. A few other projects that I wanted to highlight, Lucerne Harbor dredging, John Klaus Regional Park, the development for that new 600-plus-acre property that the county just accepted the assets. So we're progressing there. Parks and trails in Cobb, Lakeside County Park improvements, as well as Upper Lake and Kelseyville, and also a grant that we received from Caltrans Clean California, about a $1.3 million grant for improvements at about a dozen parks around the county, as well as a $400,000 grant from the state for improvements at Lakeside Park. So last, well, second to last bullet point here, landfill, expansion, construction. That is, we're going to be hitting a milestone. We are waiting on our final permit, and we'll be putting the construction documents, just putting the final touches on that, putting it out to bid. So we anticipate, you know, middle to end of this year, going to construction on Phase 1 for that landfill expansion. We also have a hopeful partnership with RCRC, the Environmental Services JPA for that, for a partnership on a grant application that we hope to bring in about a half a million dollars for diversion work toward keeping even additional material out of the landfill. Lastly, museums, the emphasis there is on marketing, really increasing the amount of marketing that we're doing, not just here locally, but outside of the county to advertise what museums are, both physically and virtually. And lastly there, the Pomelo Gallery and Sculpture. That plan has been in place for quite a while. We've been trying to build up some funds, and we have. This is right down here in Courthouse Square. We did not receive a grant that we applied for for that, but that's not going to deter us, whether we need to pull us, use our own funds and make up the gap there or continue to apply. But that's a point of emphasis for that one specific project. So with that said, I'll wrap it up and happy to answer any questions.
Just to follow up on your praise of staff and the incredible work that they do, and then the extra load they carried through the atmospheric river conditions. I know that they were out working long hours and out in the weather and doing everything that needed to be done. And so I just want to really express my gratitude for that as well.
Well, thank you. It's not just Public Services. There are many, many departments.
Many departments, yep. Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, just two things. Just wanted to, you know, give you praise for the situation with Lucerne Harbor. I know it took a little longer than expected, but the fact of the matter is they found something. And so taking that care is a big deal. And so I know it's discouraging and disconcerting for folks of the town of Lucerne, but at the same time, very important situation there. So just kudos for that. And I just had a thought about the museums when it comes to the different areas that we have, specific, you know, old buildings, things like that. Are they connecting those to like the Malden book stories, if that makes sense? Because I think it's important to, when we talk about these facilities or even exhibits, seeing the mindset that took back, that was taken back in the timeframe. You see what I'm saying? It's just a thought. I don't know if, I know it's a lot of probably referencing and putting together, but I mean, I just really think it's important to know the mindset back when those things were found or established. So just a thought.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. The Lucerne Harbor, yeah, SEQA has completed, big milestone, and we're in the process of pulling permits. So that, you know, that we're on the way forward there. For the museum question, it's certainly a topic that I need to talk to the expert, to the curator, about, as well as many other experts that are on the various committees that advise the museums. But I can tell you that the Heritage Commission, there's been some discussion of reviving that, which ties into historic properties, preservation ordinance. So these are things that have been discussed, but I need to kind of give it a little boot. And it involves more than just Public Services. There's multiple departments there. But yeah, that's a topic that has been brought up, but I certainly need to have a conversation with the curator to better answer your question.
Thanks, Lars.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, Lars. And next, we have Public Works and Water Resources.
Good morning, Board. Scott DeLeon, Public Works and Water Resources. I'd just like to start by acknowledging Deputy Director of Water Resources Marina Delajanas, who has joined us here today and has assisted in preparation of a number of these slides. So thank you for your assistance and being here. You know, this is a challenge to try to encompass everything that we do and present this. And I was reminded I need to be done in five to seven minutes. So it's a challenge to put all the things that we do. And so with that, I'll make an effort here to quickly go through these things. We presented us an update to the draft five-year plan to improve the county road network. We secured community funding for the Safe Routes to School project at the Kelseyville sidewalk for the schools there. We completed a road rehab project for roads affected by the sulfur fire, utilizing funding that was provided by your board. We completed a chip seal project this year that included those sulfur fire roads, as well as New Long Valley Road. And pretty excited about this, we leveraged federal funding to purchase a new chip cart for county road chip seal projects. We were using a machine that we were given by Sonoma County. It's 30-something years old, and we were able to purchase a brand-new chip cart utilizing the federal funding. So pretty excited about that. Next slide, please. Prepared successful grant application for the Soda Bay Corridor evacuation route planning and maintenance project, and we completed the construction of a bridge replacement in Winter Springs. For 2023, Public Works, we're obviously continuing our response to the atmospheric river storm, or, yes, that response. We're still doing pothole patching. We're going to be doing pothole patching for a while. The road network, as you all are aware, took a beating from that storm, but crews are working hard to get those repairs completed. We intend to finalize the pavement rehabilitation plan, including development of a strategy for increased funding, begin implementation of that plan to include preparation of plans and specs for the contracted work, and complete surfacing projects performed by county forces. We intend to complete the preliminary design for a new hangar development area at Lambs and Airfield. Complete the right-of-way acquisition for South Main Street Soda Bay Road widening project. Complete the slip-out repairs on Socrates Mine Road. It's been a longstanding project, and we hope to have that out to bid and completed this year. Complete bridge replacement projects in Spring Valley and Bartlett Springs, and of course, complete that Kelseyville Safe Routes to School project. And it's not on the slide, but complete the Soda Bay Corridor evacuation grant objectives. Moving on to water resources. We've had a number of accomplishments with water resources. We submitted the groundwater sustainability plan for Big Valley. We secured internal cannabis tax funding for the abatement of lakebed dilapidated structures and abandoned vessels, and we've brought a couple of those to your board where we perform the abatement of those structures. And we will continue to do that in 2023. We received a grant timeline extension from the California Department of Water Resources for the Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project. for the Middle Creek Flood Damage Reduction and Ecosystem Restoration Project for property acquisition. If you recall, that's a $15 million grant. It had a completion date of June of this year, and we received a five-year extension for that. We had a successful collaboration with AmeriCorps Civic Spark Fellowship, and they completed our shoreline inventory. We continued to maintain over nine miles of levees in the Upper Lake community. Using a grant, we launched the Invasive Muscle Introduction Rapid Response and Containment Transition Plan for Clear Lake. And basically what that is, is it's the development of a plan for what do we do should we be infested with quagga mussels. So again, we're using a grant to, to do that planning. Over $1.6 million in various state funding for a variety of of water resources programs and projects. We worked on the working group, we were a member of the California Department of Water Resources County Drought Resilience Plan Guidebook. We secured $750,000 through Congressman Mike Thompson, again, for the Middle Creek project, and passed the recertification of FEMA's Community Rating Service, which affects flood insurance premiums for folks in Lake County. For 2023, our points of emphasis, our Water Resources staff was very involved with our atmospheric river storm response, and will continue to do that. Continue collaboration with local and state entities for pre-drought planning. Kind of interesting to continue talking about that after we've received these rains, but in the event that we don't get any more rains, we're, we're going to be right back in it. So we'll continue with that, that effort. Continue efforts with collaboration for, with local, state, and tribal entities for the Clear Lake Hitch Habitat Conservation. Complete the final report for the Middle Creek Flood Control Feasibility Study, and update Chapter 23 of the Clear Lake Shoreline. That's, that's the shoreline ordinance. It's, has not been addressed in many years, and we're working on an update to that. We're, have applied for funding through the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Plan to implement some of the projects there. Will continue the acquisition of parcels located for the Middle Creek project, and continue our efforts to prevent the infestation of zebra and quagga mussels into Clear Lake with our Ramp Monitor Program, which I think has been really, really successful. Some items that weren't on the, on the, the slides, staff completed a, a two-year, two-leaf restoration project on Clark Island. That was a collaboration with local tribes and others. We will continue that effort in 2023. I'm going to steal something from a previous presenter, and we really need to improve employee retention and recruitment. We're still struggling, especially on the Public Works side, to recruit positions in that department. We're going to continue with that. And then finally, I'd just like to thank staff from both Public Works and Water Resources. You know, this year so far has been extremely challenging with storms, and, and I think our crews have done some outstanding work, and just like to publicly thank them. So with that, thank you for your time, and if, try to answer any questions.
And when I reached out to thank you for all of that work, you said, oh, this isn't necessary, this is what our staff does. But I, it's, it's always important to acknowledge when anyone goes above and beyond, and they, they certainly did. So I also echo that, that thing.
Appreciate that.
Just a thank you for, I know in Upper Lake with the, what we were talking, what you mentioned in here about the, the levees and whatnot, just being available and working with that group at West Region Town Hall. I appreciate your staff and, and the workshop that was conducted and all that, so, thanks.
Supervisor Green?
Just adding on the pile of thanks. I mean, it's, it's been a quick introduction to me as the new supervisor here, but seeing both the Public Works side and Water Resources incredibly hard at work, handling multiple dueling responsibilities and, and handling it pretty well from everything I've seen. So super excited to see the work that's been done. I want to acknowledge everything in here that 2023 has been outlined before. I suspect there might be one or two bullet points that you haven't been able to plan for just yet, including some that I plan, plan to bring, but compliments all, all around. I just can't say enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just want to pass on, over the last couple of weeks, I've done a couple of state of the counties in South County, and one of the biggest clearing things throughout the atmospheric river storm, I know we got long-term work to do on the roads, but the potholes were just exacerbated by the storms. And multiple compliments to your department and all the workers out there of attacking those, you know, the biggest ones, especially in the South County area. So need to pass that on from, from all of our constituents that were, you were getting inundated by calls, but your workers got out there and performed. So thank you very much, and to all the departments that did during that, those trying times, so.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the army of pothole fillers. I've been out and about. But the other piece of that is on Facebook, taking road complaints directly there rather than, you know, people having to go through the website. And I know that's extra work, but it's, it's, it seems to be making a difference. It's easier for the public. So I don't know if that's a pilot thing you're trying out. I don't know how sustainable it is, but I think especially during this time when there's an extra load of, of road complaints, it's, it's good. But I, I do have a question about when we might see the next version of the, of the road plan?
So I'm working on it. We just have a lot of competing interests and, and still waiting on some information from different utilities. I'm trying to incorporate their plans and undergrounding.
Yes.
What we, we just can't have is we go out and repair a road, and then we have a utility that, that wants to come in and do a project. So just, if you can imagine all of the, not just AT&amp;T and Pacific, or PG&E, but all of the water systems, all the different water agencies, there's just a lot of folks that we're trying to, to incorporate into that project. I, I'd say in the next, well, we're at the end of January, so hopefully in the next 60 days, you'll, we'll be back.
Okay, great. Yeah, there are a lot of moving pieces, a lot of partners, and this is just one thing, it's a big investment that we have to get right.
Right.
So I understand that. Thank you.
And one last thing, specific to Lori Price, getting all the information out on the road closures, and just on time, you know, the community greatly appreciated that, and obviously in each district, I think we did too, but that was another specific one I had to mention her, getting that information out there online.
Yeah, we've had a, a presence on Facebook, and, and Lori handles that for our department. And, and again, it's, it's, it's what we do, and she does a spectacular job with that. And, and so I appreciate your comment, and if she's not listening, I'll be sure and pass it along.
Thank you, Lori. Thanks.
I just, just wanted to add one more thing, and just with the sulfur bank road, that repaving, and then when you came to the town hall, on East Region Town Hall, the fact that that plan was brought forward to us, and it, it's given a lot of people in the district hope. You know, I know we talked about it possibly being delayed, but the fact that it's being done, people are like, okay, it's, it's going to happen. So just thanks for that, too. And, and the tangibility of the, some of the roads just lets them know, okay, it's coming. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Register our voters and elections.
Good morning, Maria Valades, Register our Voters. And I know there's a couple of things I missed on here. So I'll start off with the redistricting that initiated in 2021 with the supervisory district changes. That had to be implemented, and we had to redraw our boundaries, as well as the voting precincts for the June election in 2022. After that, we had the Board of Education that also aligns their, their districts with the supervisory districts, which we also had to turn around and implement. Both local college districts, the Mendel Lake, Mendel Lake Community College and Uba College District also redrew their boundaries, so we had to implement those for the November election. We moved into our new office in February of last year, so thank you to Public Services and to IT to assist with making that happen and making it seem so smoothly. In 2022, we conducted two elections, the June primary and then the November 22, the November general election, always making sure that we continue to promote voter participation. We kept our 22 polling locations, or polling places, and continued deploying our six-ballot drop boxes so that voters can participate in either matter that they chose to do so. With that, we also, in between the two elections, we managed to be able to, four of us from the office, were able to attend our association, and we are now California Professional Election Administrator, so we graduated with the courses on those. And then Lourdes and I took the CSAT classes, and we also received our credential for that. So that was part of our 2022 accomplishments. In 2023, we are preparing for tentative 2023 general district election, even though there's no, most, the majority of our districts switched over to the even-year elections. We still have one district that has to still file for candidacy, and so we have to prepare for that. And then, in addition, we're now starting to prepare for the March 2024 presidential election, so working on that, and always continue attending training to help us grow within our job performance. And that's it. Thank you.
It was a big year.
Yes, it was.
And you did, you, you moved through it successfully, so thank you for every.
Well, thank you to my staff.
It was, it was a lot.
Yes, it was.
Supervisor Green?
Yes, thank you for everything Elections does, ROV. As a recovering Elections worker, I'd like to say hi, and thank you very much for all the hard work for our elections last year, but also to highlight for the community, depending on where else you live in the country and who's speaking, you'll hear any number of comments and views about the integrity of our elections. And I just want to signal how proud I am of our local Elections staff and our local community for supporting them. We had several drop boxes out at the last election. I didn't hear anybody camping out on them. I didn't hear any, any notion of the criticism that has been leveled at Elections workers and other communities. So both to the Elections Department and to the community that supports that department, job well done all around. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention one more thing that I haven't brought up forward, but in 2021, we moved in with Granicus to do our campaign filing disclosure campaign statements, which are now online and viewable for the public. So that was really a big help for us for the June, or for last year, or for 2022, where, you know, people could go and view campaign filings or contributions, people ask about contributions. So they're no longer having to call our office, it's online and it's on our website. So that was a big accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Lake County Sheriff's Office.
Good morning, still a little bit. Rob Howe, Lake County Sheriff, Coroner. Thank you for your time. So I took this five-to-seven minute thing pretty seriously, so our, our slides are kind of down to a minimum. We'll get this through as quickly as possible, but of course, be willing to, to answer or discuss anything that, that you guys might want to talk about. So for 2022 accomplishment, we'll start with our repeater project. There are 12 repeaters in the county, I believe. We purchased those repeaters with Homeland Security funds. Three have been equipped, and the remainder will be equipped in 2023. Implementation of stop data reporting, so that's Racial Identity Profiling Act. We established a, a procedure to collect that and report to the Department of, excuse me, Department of Justice. I think we have some more. This just goes in a little more detail about the radios. It doesn't just help, went over that. Doesn't just help law enforcement, it goes into how it helps Public Works, animal control, special districts, they all use those radio repeaters. So a few more of the accomplishments, roadmap task force. We, we continued our participation in that, we're looking to actually increase that. Supervisor Crandall, you brought up a point with, what do you do with these meth houses? And one of the bad things about working low-staffed is you're doing just the minimum, and you're kind of only reactive, so it's really difficult to make a difference. My opinion is these task forces or things like it, that's the answer. That's, you know, working collaboratively, collaboratively with other departments in a, in a proactive stance is a way to try to make an impact. We've had cases, or you can have cases where you arrest a dealer out of a house, well, there will be another dealer in that same house before that person is even booked. But if a deputy arrests that person, then you have code enforcement to shut down the house, and the DA's office to do some asset forfeiture, working together is the way to to impact those things. So we contracted with the state to provide psychological evaluations and treatment at our jail. This is all to decrease incompetent-to-stand trial cases. This is a really big deal. If the board hasn't been following SB 184, essentially the state has realigned the responsibility to decrease ISTs to the county. It's a tough thing because we really have, as a Sheriff's Department and the county, we really have very little control over it. We do make arrests, but so does LPD, CPD, CHP. And if a court determines that that person arrested is, is an IST, incompetent-to-stand trial, well, the state's determined that they've, they've come up with essentially fining counties for the number of ISTs they have. The, the formula goes off, a base year last year, and if we see more than that, we'll be fined for the number of ISTs we have. So these kind of programs that we've established in the jail are extremely important right now. We're tracking to not be in that, in that place, but that can change. We created and filled a staff services analyst position at the jail. This is a position created specifically to coordinate programs, classes, to reduce recidivism, to help that transition out of custody. Next is, so, points of emphasis going on to 2023. There's a couple of them here. I'm going to go out of order. Progress toward completion of the Armory Repurposing Project. Lars spoke about that a little bit, that's a big project. As I understand it, we just finished the RFP for the, for the architectural consultant, and that should be coming before the board at some point, but again, that's, that's multi-years out, I think. Big thing to keep, keep working on, but I want to focus more on improving the staffing levels through expanded and unique recruiting methods. One thing I wanted to, and work this into a little thank you, right now I'll give you a couple of stats. We're looking at close to 40% vacancy rate in correctional deputies, 30% vacancy in deputy, and currently 57% in dispatch. And I bring those stats just to, to really thank the men and women who are there. If you can imagine working and doing everything that a Sheriff's Office does with that kind of vacancy rate, so just a big thank you to the employees that we, that we already have. And we are looking forward to working closely with HR, being aggressive and innovative with our recruiting techniques to improve that in the coming years. Let's see here. We've enhanced our social media, and we're, we're working on online job recruiting efforts in D, Monster, Facebook, LinkedIn, essentially anything we can do to get to, to young people that may be interested in law enforcement. Lot of emphasis on our trainee program coming up, you've probably seen the flyers out there for it. Think that's another way where we can attract, attract people to law enforcement. Again, this is a, an issue we could talk way more than five to seven minutes about is recruitment issue, but that'll be, that's for 2023. That's what I have.
All right, thank you. And you also got to experience your first disaster, second week?
Yeah.
And your staff, again, stepped up, so thank you for.
Tremendously. I, I would thank them as well, Gavin and Leah. I, I was out of county in training, so my, my first declaration of emergency came via phone and working with people, and I've given them thanks personally, but it was, it was really, really awesome to have everybody answer the phone, everybody staying in communication. And the Sheriff's Department truly does have a great staff, that I got fortunate enough to walk into.
Anyone from the board? All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thanks.
So Department of Social Services is, and you're going to be doing that?
No, I think we'll defer at this time, and since Mr. Harder is in the room, let's, let's do him.
Okay. We will move on to special districts.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Scott Harder, Special District Administrator. Thank you for having me today. I guess I want to start out by saying, you know, the 2022 accomplishments, you know, we've got capital projects. We've got a lot of capital projects in the works. Those are always the, you know, the flashy projects, the whiz bang ones that are like, ooh gee, great, the visible ones. But the reality is, is we have five water districts and four sewer collection systems and nine lighting districts that we maintain. And we serve 35,000 customers in the county, and my staff is incredible, and they do that day in and day out. And, and, you know, they continue to ensure that potable water is provided to our customers, that sewer's collected, it stays in the pipe, doesn't spill out on the ground, it gets treated, and then shipped to our partners up in Calpine and up in the Geysers area. And, and that kind of ongoing thing, that just, that just happens because, because of my incredible staff. And they do this in spite of, you know, atmospheric rivers and drought. And so that kind of brings me to the first bullet point is, you know, one of our accomplishments for 2022 was that in spite of, you know, multiple years of drought and significant challenges, my staff was able to continue to provide potable water to those five water districts without interruption. Was it challenging? Yeah. Were they at the plant 24 hours sometimes taking shift? Yeah. Were we on the emergency intertie with, with the city of Lakeport at times? We were. But because of their dedication and their hard work and their skill and their abilities, we were able to keep water to our customers, you know, without interruption. So that's probably the biggest accomplishment. Some of our highlights on the capital project side, we completed the Quail Trail Water Main Replacement Project. So that's a grant-funded project to replace about 2,000 feet of water main out in our Spring Valley Water District. Construction has completed with the exception of paving back the trench cut. So that'll happen once things warm up. But that was an IRWM funded project to reduce leaks out there, help keep our variance down, help keep more water in the pipes going to our customers. And one of the other major accomplishments, and it's, it's been needing to happen for quite some time, is that we were able to work with our ratepayers, even though it was contentious, to adopt a rate increase in Middletown. And that was before the board, and I, you know, thank you for your efforts in championing that as well, because it's really needed for the sustainability of that district. You know, we've got a couple of more sewer districts probably in the next upcoming year where we're going to be looking at and considering rate increases. So we'll be back before you again with some more 218 processes. But rates had not been increased in Middletown since 1995, 27 years. So those go into effect next month. Just fair warning, you may hear some public outcry. We're already prepared for it. But, you know, the rates are still reasonable, given the other rates around the county, and it's really going to provide that sustainability and long-term sustainability for the Middletown community and allow us to move forward. We've got a $5 million grant where we can do treatment plant improvements at that treatment plant, which we would not have been able to move forward on without a sustainable rain structure. So those are a couple of the highlights. I'm happy to talk more if you guys have specific questions, but I don't want to take too much time. So moving forward, our 2023 points of emphasis, just continue that operation. Continue that, that, what's the word I'm looking for? Dependable service that we provide to our customers. Water and sewer. You know, people get up in the morning, they get ready for work, they go jump in the shower, they turn on the knob, they expect water to be there. We want to be able to continue to provide that. That's the big highlight. We've got some staff retirements coming up in our field, some of the senior field staff are retiring, so there's going to be some transitions, some continuity. We're going to work with that and work through that. But, you know, continue standard operations and maintenance, and then continue all the capital projects we've got going on. We've got millions of dollars of grant projects that we're managing. We've got the Full Circle Project. We've got tank replacements in Soda Bay. We've got projects, you know, up on the North Shore. We're also working with developers. We've seen a significant increase in development within the county. So that ties in with that 2028 vision, you know, having water and sewer infrastructure improvements to those facilities so that development can happen. We've got the Call Your Avenue project up in Nice. You know, we're working closely with the developers. City of Clearlake is doing tremendous amounts of work down there. They're, they're building housing projects, they're building hotels. So we interface with those developers to ensure there is capacity in the system, to ensure that we get the development fees that are required, and we move those projects forward successfully. And then, you know, lastly, we have a dedicated grant manager who does a wonderful job of finding grant resources and then managing them. So we're going to continue to do that. We look for creative ways to fund these projects and finance them, because we do live in a disadvantaged county, and we can't put that all in the back of our ratepayers.
I'm glad you brought up the, the high degree in which your staff performs even during difficult situations, because they were obviously out there during the atmospheric river storms, but in the summer months when the lake was low and doing whatever it takes to keep the water flowing. So-
Yeah, couldn't do it without them.
Great team. We have a great team.
Yeah.
Supervisor Crandall?
Just wanted to also emphasize, because you mentioned, you know, all the responsibilities that Special District deals with, but also the lighting. You know, in Upper Lake, you got to the bottom of that situation with those lights, and that really, really helped out for the town, I know. And I know there's still work to be done, but figured out why it's, you know, not to mention Clear Lake Oaks and that lighting district as well. So I know you're working on that, but I just wanted to highlight that so the public knows there's also other things that you guys-
Yeah, nine lighting districts, which I didn't mention that we manage, yeah.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, and not to put anyone on the spot, you least of all, but water, sewer, wastewater, South Main Street, Soda Bay corridor, the failure of the, you know, the annexation kind of raises fresh questions. I don't want, again, don't want to put anyone on the spot, you least of all, but we're going to have to talk about that stuff before Public Works spins up the next steps on, on the road widening projects. So I don't know if you've been involved in some of those prior discussions, where it was all on admin, but look forward to whatever input we have moving forward. But since that thing didn't go through, I am eager to hear what the next steps might be from everyone involved in services down there. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Treasurer Tax Collector.
Good morning, Board. Thanks for the opportunity to present on this. I'm going to share some of the accomplishments from the office with last year, even though I wasn't there. I was working closely with them, and I wanted to talk a little bit, a little bit about what they were doing. First, I'd like to commend the staff in the office. There's a great deal of job duties to complete, and they've been operating at a 30% vacancy rate on average. So it's a lot of stress on the staff, and I'm really proud of the efforts they've made to get all of these tasks completed. So to run through some of them, there was the successful completion of an extensive Chapter VII tax sale, which is the property tax default auction. There's continued development of the investment program for Treasury, for our Treasury pool, for both the county and districts throughout the jurisdiction. The continued collection of transient occupancy taxes. The continued development and implementation of cannabis cultivation and business taxes. And the continued management, billing and collections of secured, unsecured, and supplemental property tax. Furthermore, there's other tasks the office continues to complete. The office continues to help coordinate tax information for real estate transactions, maintains daily Treasury operations and reporting, manages the court collections program to enforce court order debt, and manages state mandated reporting of cash and personal property for absent heirs or claimants. Some of the future plans and points of emphasis that I would like to address are heavily dependent on technology. There's a lot of technological improvements that we need to do to upgrade existing software programs. So that's going to be one of our highest priorities, especially with the shortage in staff. If we can update a lot of this software, it's really going to open up a lot more time for us, help promote efficiency, and I think it's really going to help us go forward on a lot of the other projects we'd like to get to. Some of the highlights are to update the existing software supporting bank check processing. This would allow for the electronic, for the electronic transmission of checks. Right now, our checks go to the bank manually. If we can do this, we can really speed things up. It's going to cut back on time. But more importantly, it's also the gateway to the other payment processing program we'd really like to work at, and that's the Lockbox Payment Processing Service. We have to do more software upgrades to get there, so these other things have to happen first. But that would allow an outside vendor to actually process our payments in a more immediate fashion. This is what a lot of our neighboring counties use. And right now, the vendor we already work with for check imaging is the one that these other counties have. It's actually able to fully integrate with both our check processing service and our Megabyte Property Tax System. So this could be a real opportunity for us to basically get very rapid processing of our payments with a more automated application into our system. And that's one of the biggest burdens right now on the office staff. So the next, one of the larger projects that I'd like to address is the development of a low-value ordinance for your board to review. That would help take some of the lower-value properties off the tax roll. That's something that I would be working with both the Assessors Office on and the support of Staff and County Council to help develop a plan that could work for the county. The goal with that ordinance, along with a review of discharges across departmental programs, which would include court order debt as well as tax programs, is to reduce the existing inventory and limit the collections activity to more cost-effective operations. Right now, we're collecting on a lot of bad debt, debt that's very small, debt that's old, with enormous interest and penalties, no real, no real possibility of actual recovery. And so it's an enormous burden on staff time, and there's really limited opportunity for revenue. So whatever we can do to actually constrict this to debt we can collect on and sort of make it worth our time and effort, that, that is something I'd really like to explore. One of the other big projects is another software update, and that's to update our existing property tax software. This can help streamline operations. Megabyte has other modules and services that we can add on. One of them helps support tax sales. Right now, a lot of the processes behind our tax sales are manual in nature. It's, I've been working on them. We have other staff in the office working on them. If we were to upgrade the software, that just opens up further opportunity for staff time and helps streamline our operations. So that sums it up. I'm happy to take questions.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, certainly excited to see the, the idea of discharging some of these low-value debts. I think that type of efficiency is super exciting. We had, just like CDD, we had discussed previously, at least in preliminary talks, about some possibility of leveraging a software that California Cannabis Authority has available to help things like tracking cannabis tax revenues. And again, without boxing anybody in, I know there's a value proposition there, but I hope you'll continue to be open and continue talks like that. I know they'll have a different number of other software applications that could do the same thing, potentially differently. But this is a cannabis central county. We need to be in a position of leadership, and I think in just understanding the offerings of that, it's kind of a CSAT-sponsored JPA, so there may be some value there. So again, without boxing you in or CDD, and I am curious to see if there is something that JPA would have to offer that would help streamline, streamline operations, collections of taxes, and also maybe give us some information that would be useful for compliance work. So with that, appreciate everything you've presented so far. Good luck in 2023. We're glad you're on board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have our University of California Cooperative Extension Pharma Advisors.
Good afternoon, Board. I get to be the first one to say that today, so that's kind of fun. It's a real pleasure to be able to present to you guys today some of the results and where we're headed in UC Cooperative Extension, also known as the Farm Advisors' Office. On this particular first slide, I've outlined the programs that we basically offer with advisors that are either located in Lake or in Mendocino or adjoining counties. And so we presently have a diversified agricultural advisor who was just hired. Of course, pomology advisor, you've known Rachel Elkins, I'm sure, for a lot of years. Viticulture, we also have a brand new advisor in viticulture with Glenn McGordy retiring. You've still got an old one here in the livestock and natural resources area, that's me. Forestry, I think you've also heard from Dr. Michael Jones. He's presented to you in the past. We have a brand new vertebrate pest control advisor that will be servicing Lake County, as well as NAPA and Moran, I believe. We, in addition to support, we have an integrated pest management program, with the, the goal is to reduce pesticide use and to monitor problems with invasive species. You all love the 4H Youth Development Program, which is what most people recognize as one of our programs. You have an outstanding Master Gardener Program in Lake County, and we have a Master Gardener Coordinator do that. I think I mentioned the last time I visited with you that we have Water Quality, Quantity, and Climate Change Advisor that's in the hiring process. So that'll be a future in 2023, as well as a fire and prescribed burn advisor that will be based and serve Lake County. The diversified agriculture is Klebsen Goncalves. He is from Brazil. He started July 10th of this year. He's developed a needs assessment. All of our young advisors, when we first get them here, is they're supposed to learn the county. They're going to eventually be like Rachel and I, to become kind of area geographic experts in our disciplines. And so he's actually contacting growers at this point. He's reached out to them with a survey. He's been, of course, answering questions. That's what a lot of people view us as, is the technical expertise you call when you've got a question. So he's been doing that. He's already wrote and received two grants to look at organic weed control. So he's very successful. He's hitting the ground running, and he also has his PhD. Obviously, pomology, Rachel's been here the longest, and so her projects, really, at this point, she's completing 10-year projects. And I won't read all of those to you to maintain time, but she's, in addition, of course, we use all kinds of multimedia, Zooms, Facebook, social media, all forms to deliver our project. Chris Chen, Dr. Chris Chen, just started in January. He's given three separate informative talks on vineyard management and extreme weather events in Lake County already. He's wrote and received grants to establish a three-year trial at a vineyard, a large vineyard collaborator's property in the High Valley AVA area. He's created a video on pruning for Master Gardener Programs. So even local, small-scale vineyard owners will have that training available. Myself, I've conducted a statewide anaplasmosis cattle disease study where I've worked with five different ranchers collecting blood samples. Anaplasmosis causes abortion in cattle, and it's caused by, carrier is the Pahuaheutec, and animals that are exposed to it, their first year will actually abort, and abortion losses are significant. So that's one that's going on. I've also been working on what we call a kind of a satellite forage analysis. We're using satellite imagery to estimate forage production and forage loss, and we're ground truthing that on ranches. I have one plot out in Middletown that we harvest four times a year. And that, actually, we've got some results from that already. That has helped in this last drought cycle to get emergency funding for our ranchers so that they can buy low-cost feeds. Forestry, Michael Jones, so we're road warriors, so it's always hard to get information from all of our different advisors. Of course, he's hosted a forest stewardship workshop for Lake County. That was a multi-day event, and then they had a field day at Cobb Mountain. He's collaborated with Cal Fire to conduct a forest health survey in identifying the extent of conifer mortality. Again, he did present to the board. He served as a subject matter on the Collaborative Lake County Conifer Mortality Task Force, and he's continued to build the capacity of the Lake County Prescribed Burn Association. He's secured a very large grant to help with that process, and of course, he's conducted and helped conduct several community small-scale burns. Also, he has been collaborating with the Tribal Eco Restoration Alliance and the Watershed Center to help host a prescribed fire training- Center to help host a prescribed fire training exchange in Lake County. 4-H Youth Development is Julie Frizzell. The camp has focused on camp team staff trainings, food safety, leadership training, and conflict resolution. They put on a summer camp for youth from both Lake and Mendocino Counties that's really widely attended, focuses on healthy food, life skills, team building, and cooperation. And there's collaboration with Big Valley Band of Pomos to open a new, and forgive me, I will not even attempt to pronounce the Zabena Po 4-H Club, so that will be a brand-new 4-H club in Lake County, which we're excited about. Next slide, please. So our goals, our ag and natural resources programs are usually long-term, so most of our research projects described for 2022 accomplishments will continue. A proof for recruitment in 2023 are those two advisors that I was talking about, and I think those will be added resources to us, especially given the problems with water quantity, quality, and impending climate change. As the new advisors mature, their educational research and outreach in their areas is going to expand, and we tell our advisors that they should only plan 50% of their time so that they can take account of opportunities that exist to help the communities and to help do problem-solving research. So I think I've mentioned this before, any of your constituents or the board itself, if you have an issue that comes up, please feel free to contact us. We're the open door, the front door to the University of California. And if our local expertise is not sufficient, we're backed up with a network of specialists on three campuses, as well as even research scientists throughout the whole University of California network. So we may not know the answer ourselves here locally, but we can help you. With that, I don't want to run into the lunch hour too much, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you. The expertise that your advisors bring to our community members is absolutely invaluable, and I've reached out to many of them multiple different times, even before working here. So I know I've worked most closely with Mike Jones this last year and Rachel with the Walnuts. So I'm just so grateful that they are here, they have the open door, they're always available, and they are just an incredible resource.
And I would offer that if you want to learn more about any one of their individual programs, please invite them to give a presentation. You know, I'm just trying to give a quick overview, but as I said, these are all very, very talented professionals in their fields, and they're here to help the community in any way they can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, well, I want to thank you for the meeting we had at your office, and also I wanted to thank Rachel, who I spent some time with on the phone a couple days ago. I appreciate everyone's openness. I was asking you about cannabis, and apparently that's going to be a bridge too far for UC even at this late date. So UC, shake it loose, come on. But in addition to the long-term projects and the long-term body of knowledge, which is so valuable, we have some very distinct short-term challenges coming up here in this county involving competing water uses, and our longstanding understanding of beneficial water uses and best available technology for agriculture is changing rapidly, both because of three years of drought plus and then some recent developments involving the clearly hitch and law cases involving the public trust doctrine of water use as well. And without putting you on the spot, I just want to, again, appreciate the talks that we've had so far, but invite you to look internally if there are short-term actions that could be taken absent a unified request, because I think we're still trying to figure out where we want to go in the next year. But UC is a trusted venue where information gets shared, where science gets applied. And so I hope you can start those, even though you guys are out in the field and you have to chase them down. I hope you can herd the cats just long enough to discuss what role UC could have in a short-term response to these evolving situations. It could be just low-hanging fruit, starting off with a workshop on best management practices for frost protection pumping, because that's been an issue. I know that is the best available technology, but there could be some nuance in how that gets done on particular spots. So again, I thank you for all the science and all the hard work that you've done, but if I can issue kind of a little invitation to look internally, this may be a busy year for all of us, UC Cooperative Extension included.
Well, that's what we're here for, and so that's why I say when we plan only 50% of our time and effort, it's so we can respond to those kinds of short-term types of topics as well. And again, the whole goal here is to provide the science.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to make sure and speak up because of an idea that came in my mind, just wanting to hopefully get Mike Jones to come and speak with us when we have our next conversation about the fire maps. I think his perspective and his expertise might be useful in making sure that we have appropriate language in our letter.
Yeah, by all means, do invite him, and I can tell him to contact you, I guess, to make that kind of arrangement, or who should I?
He can reach out to me.
Okay, just, okay. I can do that.
Great. Well, we can reach out to him, too.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we have, we have a lunch break. Are the other two presenters going to be available after lunch?
It's unknown. It's unknown at this time.
Thank you. Okay, I was just wondering if we should do public comment now, or should we do it after lunch, if we're going to have the other two presenters?
That's up to you. You can always, after the lunch break, begin with public comment on the presentations that have been made, and if the other two cannot participate, you can just take what you have, or you can do it now.
I have one follow-up question, too. On all the department ed presentations, does Human Resource have one? No, that's, sorry, Admin. Okay, just clarification. I saw Pam in the room, so I just...
Do you have a preference of public comment before or after lunch?
I'm okay with it right now. That's me.
I think so, too.
I'm good with now, just because the public has been here the whole time, and maybe they want to speak and leave and move on.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Okay, so now we'll open it up for public comment on the presentations that we've been hearing all morning. Is there anyone in the Zoom room? That is not staff. I don't see anybody in the Zoom room. Okay, then we'll close public comment, and if our other two presenters are available, we can continue with that after lunch, and we'll take a one-hour break and come back here at 1:20. Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for coming back, and we have a couple more presentations. We did find the HR slides, and so we can start with that. Pam Samick?
Good afternoon, Pam Samick, HR. Some of our major accomplishments for 2022, we helped coordinate hiring of 180 employees. We updated our recruitment rules, which helped streamline the hiring process. We updated our pre-employment categories, reducing the need to do 50 pre-employment medicals, also helping to streamline the time to hire. We updated our interactive forms and process. We updated the performance management system. We updated many of our benefit presentations. We hosted multiple employee luncheon learns, giving opportunities on ownership, credit repair, budget, and the Golden State Down Payment Assistance Program. We created a records retention policy and cleaned up 45 years of old records. And of course, we kept up the ever-changing COVID protocol during the last year. Some of the key things we'll be working on in 2023 is continuing to maintain a collaborative and integrated process for HR service delivery. We will place a priority on recruitment and hiring to reduce the vacancy rates. We will work with departments to analyze and prove employee retention. We will now go back to in-person training for staff and management. We will continue to update and review our HR forms and policies. And another big project, we are currently in the process of digitizing all of our HR records. Any questions?
Thank you.
No questions, just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and are we doing social services? Okay. So Johanna, can you find social services? It was fourth from the bottom.
It's going to be a whole lot better than my mug.
Making me sick.
Yeah, I got it on there, and then call up someone. It's right up her shirt corner.
Thank you. So unfortunately, Crystal Markatan cannot be here today, and she asked that I read this into the record and present to you her PowerPoint. So under 2022 accomplishments, they include adding a deputy director for adult services, being awarded the Home Safe Dollars to support housing stability for adult protective service clients, studied and restructured CWS staffing to better align with the community needs within the division, and actively participated in the countywide prevention and early intervention plan development under FFPSA. I don't believe I can answer any questions you may have, so I'll redirect those, if you have any, after this presentation.
Okay.
So in 2023, what they're looking forward to as far as providing services that follow the Vision 2028, they participate in collaborative efforts within the community to meet the needs of complex care youth, enhance LPS conservatorship program capabilities to successfully interface with Care Court, and fill the remaining vacancies within IHSS program to meet the state compliance requirements. In addition, oh, I did, oh, I missed some of the 2022 accomplishments, but I'll do that. They issued $34 million in CalFresh benefits to over 15,000 individuals in Lake County's most vulnerable, low-income households, maintained Medi-Cal coverage for over 30,000 individuals countywide, implemented virtual options for welfare-to-work participants, and permanently housed 28 families under CalWorks Housing Support Program, and provided short-term housing to 63 families with children. Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I know Crystal's not here, and you won't be answering any questions, but that first bullet point is significant. We will be transitioning out of the statewide public health emergency. That is going to have major implications for Medi-Cal recipients and CalFresh recipients. There may be some initial drops of information coming to your mailbox soon. I'm sure there'll be some notices of action coming soon. So I know, just as always, if you have any questions on those aid programs, please reach out to Social Services. They'll give you the latest skinny on that, but big changes are coming. But the good news is the reason for those big changes is we are transitioning out of the COVID public health emergency at the end of February. So stay tuned for more on that.
Okay, thank you. And that concludes our presentations, but because we did have two presentations since we lasted public input, I'll open it up if there's anyone in the chambers or in the Zoom room that would like to comment. I am not seeing any hands up. Okay, then I will turn it over to CAO Parker for the next segment of our agenda.
He's having a little technical difficulty, but again, the fiscal presentation will be provided by Stephen Carter.
Before we get too far into it, Stephen Carter, Assistant CAO, I wanted to bring up that Leisha Phillips is in the room today, and she is taking over my old position as the main finance person for the county, going to do the budgets and things. I will still oversee her and do a lot of that, but she'll be taking on a lot of those duties. So the fiscal presentation, I'll wait for that. So the fiscal presentation today is all related to general fund. That doesn't mean that general fund is the only department or fund that matters. It's just self-funded departments have a very different funding source, both state and federal grants and allocations mostly. The general fund is where there is what? That's not the way the slides are. Sorry about that. So we'll be going over the main points of emphasis in the general fund where there's discretionary revenue or room for items for your board. The first up is ARPA, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, and our section is the state and local fiscal recovery funds. We did have the committee, and the recommendations came to the board. So what I have up on the slide today is the amounts that were allocated for projects, and then the amount that hasn't been claimed so far. So if you can see, there's not very many that have been claimed so far, but it has all been allocated to departments. There are a few within this list that are already known, where other funding sources were available. For example, the first one, special districts' bridge, I didn't put in specifically what bridge it was, but the $380,000 was paid through a separate grant, so that is now going to be available to reallocate within the $10 million standard allowance. And what that means is the $10 million is the county can claim $10 million, up to $10 million, for financial difficulties from COVID. It just has to be within our governmental activities, within certain guidelines of the final rule. So if you can see, the Army remodel has $3 million, and the big key here is everything needs to be allocated, as well as mainly allocated in the budget through, before the end of 2024, December 31st, and then we would have until December 31st of 2026 to actually spend the money, but it has to be fully allocated by then. Prefer to spend most of it by the end of 2024. Dump site haulers, tertiary plant, treatment plant, those are special districts. We have $300,000 set aside for Broadbent Consultant, which we We have $300,000 set aside for Broadbent Consultant, which we have brought on board, CBG, and should be claiming soon. So we claim on a quarterly basis. So this is just information that we've claimed through December 31st of last year. We just had a claim due today, and that actually was not part of this information. I don't believe there should be any questions on this because we've gone over the $10 million before. There's $2 million set aside for Housing/Economic Development Department, which is now going to be positions within the administration office, $500,000 for the general plan update, and there is $200,000 set aside for the mobile vehicle library, mobile library vehicle. And most of that is being paid by a separate grant, but there is some still need, I believe he wanted about $50,000 of this to stay available for any overages, but there should be about 150 remaining to recycle into other ARPA projects. So the next slide is the amount that is above our $10 million standard allowance. This is about, supposed to be about almost $2,506,000 if we were going with the minimum, and that all has to follow the final rule directly. So this would be like what we've already, sorry, I'm having difficulty getting my thoughts together. So we just signed an agreement with NCO for Building Homes, Building Lives, $800,000. The first $200,000 will go out within the next few weeks, and then it will show as claimed instead of zero. So things are getting done, it's just not all the way to the claiming point yet. The other items, Public Health Department has a little over $561,000 available to them, and I've talked to Jonathan Portney, and we're going to find a way to have that money transferred to him for the correct claiming purposes. And then Kelseyville Seniors, Inc., there's $700 that's set aside for purchase slash remodel, rebuild, which will come back at a later date for a closed session within a few weeks. And then there's also $300,000 for all senior centers, and the committee approved for assessments, and it became clear that the board really wanted more like a grant program where it would be $50,000 for each senior center for any kind of capital improvements, whether it be a roof, vehicle, that type of activity, or purchase. And that will, that form is actually ready to be presented to the board, and it'll be within the next few weeks as well for approval or not. And then two different First Five software and then home visiting. We have not claimed anything yet. I will be in contact with First Five to see where that stands. And then we have already paid out the $100,000 for Lake Links for the rides, for medical appointments, et cetera, for outside of the county. And that would take care of the entire ARPA funds once it is spent. I figured I would take questions in between since these are large items, if you have any on the ARPA.
Anybody have questions on the ARPA?
No.
Just that, oh, Bruno, Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, no, I can appreciate the fact that it's slow to come in to show us the claims. What's your plan on bringing it back to the committee to kind of review where we are? I think that, I believe the board agrees on this, that we just don't want to give any money back. We want to make sure that when that deadline comes through, that we have spent all of the ARPA funds rather than having to give some money back. Kind of checking in, what's your kind of check-in timeline?
Yep, that was going to be my question, too.
I'm getting a note, one second. Prior to the budget process, so before June, June 14th and 15th, I believe, was where the recommended budget would be. So that would actually be a very good time to, we should probably do it near the end of March, early April, because that's when the departments turn in their budget to our office to start evaluating. So we would need to know around that time, and that gives us also more time to figure out, you know, if the tertiary plan will happen or if all $2 million is needed for the housing economic development. We would have a lot more information at that point in time, and it'd be ready for 2220, 2324's budget.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, the next item up would be cannabis cultivation and business taxes. So this first slide is just historical information, and that's related to different fiscal years and how much the tax revenue was, as well as the expenditures. So fiscal year 1718, when it first started, we received a little over $267,000, but we had no concept of how much funding would come in, so there was zero expenditures, and I don't believe anything was even allocated at that point. And when you move through the years, you don't really get into major revenues until fiscal year 2020, 2021, when we received a little over 8.5 million, but in that same year, we expended $300,000. So that's still a lot of revenue that did not get spent in that year. Doesn't mean it wasn't allocated for a project. Not all allocations are spent, and they could be carried over year to year. So, but if you go to the end of fiscal year 2122, the total received from 1718 to 2122 was a little over $16,276,000, and the total expenditures were $1,749,000, which leaves a fund balance available or carryover of a little over $14.5 million to 2223. That's where the next slide comes in. And that really does sound like there's an awful lot out there to reallocate to. So if you look at the fiscal year 2223 budget, the sheriff for staff, automated license plate readers, vehicle equipment, $618,000. Some, a few of these items are going to be in mid-year budget, like the vehicle equipment, so that would be part of their normal policy ask out of cannabis. Library staff is on here for $245,000, and not only budgeted, I have the future year amount in the far column. So if you notice with the sheriff, the top line with the staff, there's only $443,000 for future years. That's because it doesn't include the vehicle equipment. That's a one-time charge, but the other ones are ongoing expenses, which would need to be budgeted every year and thought about the prior year to make sure that if no taxes are received, et cetera, that we have the funding for one more year to possibly close down the program or whatever is going on, figure out how to have general fund cover it, et cetera. So then that leads into the library staff where it's $245,000 budgeted this year, but $281,000 next year, and that's because the librarian, the county librarian, Christopher Veach, wanted to hire more of the positions that we allowed. So when we initially, the committee and the board approved his request, it was originally for more positions than he actually hired. And basically, we didn't want it allocated unless he was going to use it, so he has decided to increase his allocation and start hiring more positions to the level that he requested or slightly below that he requested. And then looser in dredging, there's $100,000 budgeted there, and we heard earlier today that they finalized CEQA and it's moving forward, so that will be spent here, hopefully within the next year or two. I'll give it a wide range of time. But if that's not spent this year, then that one would be one of those future year expenses as well. And then water resources, I combined about three different requests that were approved by your board for water resources for $980,000 in this fiscal year. $800,000 is for the Army Corps of Engineers match, and then $100,000 was for the lake, sorry, $75,000 was for the lake cleanup for boats, anything like that. And $75,000, $100,000, sorry, too many numbers in my head. $100,000 was part of that grant match over five years, where it's 500 over the entire time, but we add $100,000 each year, no matter if they spent $50,000 this year, that means 150 is available next year. So that's why future years you see 500,000. It's the $400,000 for that grant and $100,000 for the lake, which is a very good reason. And then here's some one-time expenses for public services, Parks Master Plan and the feasibility study, which is $206,000, and no future costs, so that just means it's not going to be ongoing, not that it's all going to be spent this year. So it might have to carry over depending on if the items, the projects are completed. And then building deferred maintenance, that's where the committee and the board approved $1 million for deferred maintenance on our buildings, and we've had reports where it was 50, 100 million. It was astonishing. This year, we have $925,000 budgeted and $75,000, I don't recall if it was budgeted or not, which is why I put it in future years to make up the entire million. And then the roadmap task force through the committee and the board was also approved for $1 million. $661,000, a little over $661,000 is budgeted this year with 338 remaining for future years, or if at mid-year we, the board decided to increase the amount that's budgeted. And then the BOWS discretionary, there's budgeted $1,052,617, which might sound high. You guys are, the board is spending their discretionary revenue, but it's quite a bit. So it just looks like a large number, but everybody is spending theirs, and next year would be 500,000 if we decide to, we, sorry, the board decides to increase, continue the 100,000 every fiscal year. Oh, okay. North Shore Fire, there remains to be $126,000, a little over that amount towards their equipment. And child support, this is related to the raises where they have the same state allocation, even though we provided, the board provided raises to all employees, I keep saying we, sorry, provided raises to all employees. They had no way to pay for those raises, and the state won't, is, they're currently looking at the allocation, but in the meantime, they would have had to cut staff or cannabis, which was agreed by your board to cover the difference. And this is only, I believe, 30%. The fed, federal government will pick up 70, 75%. So this keeps them with the same staffing level until their allocations catch up. And that's why there's an ongoing expense, and the reason why it goes down in future years is, and it's only next year that it goes down, and that's because Gale is retiring. So the next department head likely won't have the same rate, but then the year after, you know, so two years from now, it'll jump back up into a higher amount. And then the hiring retention incentives, a lot of this is actually in mid-year. So if you recall, during the regular budget, there was only $50,000 set aside for hiring incentives, but it was approved by the board to give certain retention incentives for the sheriff's office, and it has already gone, that has already been paid out, and $535,000 is how much it's going to cost for both the incentives and the hiring, the retention incentives and the remaining hiring incentives to possibly come this fiscal year. And future years, I drop it to, I dropped it to 150,000 because it shouldn't be such a large blast unless something changes. The treasure tax collector has 20,000 set aside every year, and what that's for is the increased load strictly from cannabis activities, which that doesn't cover it, but it helps. And then the item, policy items not listed above, what that means is items that would fit into the policy that just haven't been budgeted yet. So we did have budgeted in Fund 064, Budget Unit 1072 cannabis, $200,000 for new items that meet the policy, and those just haven't been identified yet. And so that brings me down to the reserve, and the reason why the reserve is set at $6,961,111, such an odd number, what that is, is all the future years amounts plus the potential drawdown for next year's payroll increases from our MOUs, which was approved to be paid from here. So what that does is covers everything for next year, even if we don't receive any cannabis tax revenues next year if something, if anything should happen. So that gives us an entire year to wind things down and take care of it instead of having to do it immediate or within a month or two. And with all that said, the total allocation is $13,332,205, which if you look, remember the previous slide, the balance forward was a little over $14 million. So the balance is not allocated or accounted for is almost 1.2 million, and the main reason for that is because this fiscal year 2223, we had budgeted originally a little over $5 million to cover our cannabis payroll, and it turned out that we actually had enough of our own revenues outside of cannabis to take care of it, so it relinquished, it went back into the cannabis pot to be allocated out. And so the balance would be that amount, 1.2, plus any revenue received in fiscal year 2223. And Patrick, the treasurer tax collector, would have more information on that since that's really not administration, but what I've been told is that through September, we've received just over $750,000, and that's, the reason for that is we had a grant from the state, and that's the amount through the equity grant that we could transfer and pay for cultivators' taxes. So that came in ahead, so that's both tranches for them. Now, the first, the first payment wasn't due until the end of January, so basically today is the, is the last day. Yesterday, sorry, the 30th, not the 31st, okay? And from my talk with the treasurer tax collector, because that's really his side, yesterday, there's about $200,000 in the wings to come in before the end, so before the, once they process all the checks. So if you cut the $750,000 in half, because that's really the first half payments, 350, 325, 375, plus the one, 200, we're looking at, should be a minimum of about 1.25 million, and that's much lower than our actual budget, which we projected 3.5. The key difference, though, is Patrick told me that they billed out 3.9 million, so there's our ceiling. So if everything that was billed out is paid, it would be 3.9 million, but once that's billed, it's not necessarily taken into consideration the canopy area where they're saying they're only going to grow about 50% or if they're going to non-opt that year. Because of the timing of when all this gets sent out, we don't, and when we budget, it's not known at that time. So realistically, we're probably going to see around $2 million-ish is what our estimate is right now. I'm sure there's plenty of conversation with cannabis.
Okay. Questions from the board? Supervisor Green?
Where to begin? Well, $2 million is better than no million, I guess would be the starting point.
Agreed.
Looking back at the historical information, 2020, '21 and '21, '22, eight and 8.5, 6.4, that's, that, those figures are much more in line with what, when Measure C, this is primarily cultivation tax, I assume, with a little bit of business tax thrown in, but when we first started talking about this years ago, it's like if we're going to have this industry at all, and then we're going to tax this industry, what's it going to take to create a sustainable amount of tax revenues? And what will this new-fangled Measure C deliver us? And I'm still trying to track down who came up with the estimate, but the estimate at the time was approximately $8 million a year would come from this regulated industry. And I know it takes some time to grow that industry, and you see that in the revenues. And I know it takes some time to grow that industry, and you see that in the revenues. But to go from eight to six, down to a potential two, uh, represents one term to me, and one of it is opportunity cost. Our good friends up in Humboldt, much more aggressive, much different permitting structure, have banked away 40-plus million dollars in recent years, such that they can literally afford to give their growers a total flatline tax rate for future years and still be able to budget for the county's needs. Our assorted choices over the years have led us to a cumbersome, expensive discretionary permit process that has netted us, what, 100-plus permits? We have 100-plus still in the pipeline, and we have no opportunity for new projects to come forward that don't have a water board permit that they've been milking for the last three years. And the question has come up time and time again, how do we reach sustainability? How can we budget for this year to year? Uh, you know, are the growers going to come back again and ask for another tax cut? They'd be well within their rights to do so, given their, uh, impacts on their industry. We still have to get the task force to talk about our permit process, are we going to continue milking discretionary permits or go more ministerial so we can actually get these projects online? So the good news is, I think the original estimate that was given to our voters and this board at the time, 2016, is accurate. I think if we scale this industry appropriately, that means more permits, not less, and get the tax burden down to something that's more affordable, I think we can end up floating around that 5 to 8 million dollars a year. But the projections given here, and knowing what we know of the process and CDD and our ability as a task force to change that overnight is not going to happen, we're nowhere close to sustainability. So it's very concerning, such that I've literally been told, don't be looking at these as sustainable revenues, these are one-time revenues, you know, so bank them, because they're not coming back. And that, and that's hugely concerning to me. And I realize that is not fall on the shoulders of the treasurer tax collector to correct. And there's nothing we can do about it today, but the numbers to me are low enough and shocking enough that they, they signal to me a need for urgent substantial change in how we permit our cannabis industry. Um, and I don't have any questions, those are just comments. I'm just looking at the numbers, they don't look good, and we need to figure out how to sustain this industry, support this industry very selfishly for the county so that we get a sustainable source of tax revenues, but more importantly, for the people that have invested in this county and want to continue to serve this county in a helpful way by putting good projects before us and giving a little share of the, of the wealth that they generate to the county. That's all I got, thank you.
If it would please the board, I do have a little bit of additional information to share on this.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
So I think an important point to remember too here is, I'm, I am in agreement with Stephen's figures, and I did have extensive discussion with him about it. What's tough about this point in time is that because we have consistently bumped back due dates, it's hard for us to give real estimates. The way our system's structured, as Mr. Carter pointed out, we allow people to make changes to their cultivation area or their canopy area before the budget process is complete. So we're having to come up with estimates early, but it also impacts the billing, because a lot of times we're getting information late from, well, CDD, CDD is not able to complete all of their inspections until later in the season sometimes. So we send out billing, and what has consistently happened each year is that after that billing goes out, we have found out that the structure of the partnership has changed. For instance, we're sending the mail to an accountant. That accountant is no longer handling the business for this entity, and we start getting mail returns. We're going through that right now. We have over two dozen cannabis tax bills that have come back. That has been a regular experience. Then we're forced to follow up. We find out that, you know, the managing partner is different, it's a different consultant, a different accountant. And then we have to reach out, get the bill to the right person, they pay. Often, you know, there's a penalty involved at that point, so it's difficult for the business as well. But that does make it hard right now, when the due date was yesterday at 5:00 PM, for us to give a realistic prediction of where we're going to be. So I just wanted to qualify everything with that. Usually, because we had those earlier due dates in the year, by the time we had these discussions, we'd already worked through a lot of that return mail. We had phone calls from multiple parties yesterday that said they were trying to make it into pay, but they didn't get here in time, presumably they will pay late. So that's something we've gone through regularly with this industry in my time here, and I would expect it to continue until we get a more solidified program in place. I mean, each year, we've changed core functions of the program, whether it's the due date or the tax rate or the cultivation or canopy area, the area of measure that's used to assess the tax. So I hope at some point, there's more stability to the program in general, but I think as long as it's in flux, that does make it especially difficult to forecast the revenue. So I just wanted to get those statements out there to qualify some of those figures.
Yeah, and additionally, the second installment is due in May. And so if anyone missed yesterday's deadline, they have a penalty.
They have a penalty, and that's one of the features of our ordinance that makes us different than some other counties. Our penalty is completely upfront. So once someone is late, they incur that 25% penalty. It's not, uh, it's not, let's say, a 10% where then it's a one and a half percentality, one and a half percent penalty each month thereafter. You incur that whole penalty upfront. So we've also encountered this when people are late, when they need extra time, if they need an extra week, if they need an extra month, there's not an incentive to get it in right away. So we've often had people get that rest of the money and buy the second payment before other action occurs. So that's just another consideration on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
The next slide goes into secured property and sales tax. These are two of our main, it's technically three because of Bradley Burns and Prop 172, but our main discretionary revenues for the general fund. And they are actually coming in extremely well this year, both the property tax and the sales tax. If you look at the secured property tax only, um, all the others are doing fine as well, but it was easy to explain the secured property tax because that's where most of it is. If you look at 1920, we had an actual final revenue of a little over 16.5 million. 2021, a little over 17.5, and 2122, a little over 18.6 million. So it's, it's steadily going up by two-plus percent. And if you take the ratio of actual received through January and then extrapolated out, the estimated for the end of this fiscal year would be 19,353,000, and we budgeted 18,446. And part of the reason why I'm showing that is that nine, about 907,000 difference is going to show up in mid-year as being a recognized revenue so that, um, the items like the board's salary changes, as well as the requests from departments within general fund, that's how it's being paid for, is the extra revenue that we did not previously budget. So it's not carryover or FBA, it's actual revenue that's coming in. And then Bradley Burns and Prop 172 sales tax, fiscal year 1920, the total was a little over 6.5 million. And then during the pandemic, when we thought sales tax would go down, it actually exploded up, that's a bad word, but it went up immensely, we'll put it that way. 2021 went to a little over 7.8 million, and in 2122, it jumped to a little over 9 million. Now, looking at the data through December actuals and then extrapolating it out compared to the prior three to five years, we're estimating that a little over 8.6 million will come in between the two different sales taxes, and we budgeted 8.4. So realistically, out of those large crystal balls, that's not too bad. But there is about 260,000 that we could, at mid-year, recognize. And we are going to recognize about 75,000.
I don't remember, I think it was 68, then she dropped it by 15, so 15 maybe? I don't have it for sure.
Okay, so about 50,000 is already spoken for, but there is an additional 220 that is not spoken for at this point.
Any questions?
All right. Moving on to the potential impacts to future budgets. So we already have MOUs in place through June of 2024, or might be July of 2024. 2% increase for all positions, July 1 of '23, and 3% increase July of 2024. That's definitely happening, and then we would go into negotiations for any future MOUs. And then cannabis tax changes, I worded that very vaguely because it's just cannabis as a whole, depending on the tax rates, depending on how, how many cultivators there are and how many acres. It's just, um, it's just a gamble on what, how cannabis is going to go within the next few years. We don't have enough data right now to have a good crystal ball. But hopefully by the June budget time, we'll have a much better idea because we'll see what has come in, um, at least the first half. The second half, because it's in May, that's actually after when everybody turns in their budget. But I should be able to talk with the treasurer tax collector and have a better estimate at the last minute for the June budgets recommended. And then possible upcoming recession, you know, that's going to happen. We are usually a year or two behind, but then we also go, come out of the recession a year or two later. So that's on the horizon. And then the stock market volatility is definitely part of our interest rate, et cetera, it affects our finances. So those are potential impacts for future budgets that we need to just keep in mind that those will cause volatility in revenues, et cetera. And then also, the housing market is also starting to go down. That will affect property taxes. And that's 50 to 55% of our discretionary revenue is from property taxes right now and always has been. So that, that's a huge amount of our discretionary revenue. And then spending trends of the population, that's a coy way of saying our sales tax. So the sales tax is actually pretty volatile. You've seen where, over multiple years, it's 500,000 to a million difference sometimes. Lately, it's been on the good side. That doesn't mean it's always going to. Eventually, I'm thinking it still will increase slightly, but not at the rate it has been. And eventually, it will decrease some.
Questions about this segment? All right. Oh, we got a hand up, Supervisor Spatier? Can't hear you.
Hello, hello. For the possible upcoming recession, I think that's an ongoing potential, no matter what. I think the stock market will never be the same in the way that it's gone from hedge funds and stockbrokers to now people on Robinhood doing it on their cellphone in the middle of their day. It's just, it's become a different monster, especially with what we've seen with Reddit users being able to kind of control the market in their own way as well. So I think what we've done, uh, just this past budget, by adding a million dollars into our reserves, we just need to play it safe and make sure that we're prepared. But I think that's, that's always going to be a potential of something, because recessions happen from outside forces, not from what we're doing. So I think that we need to keep in mind that our reserves need to be bolstered and adequate enough to make us survive for as long as possible.
And I actually wanted to bring one more thing up that wasn't on the slides, because the LATCF or the Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, we did receive the first payment, which is a little over 1.5 million, and the second payment will be available sometime in 2023. So that's a little over 3 million dollars that has to be used for, and we have to claim it properly, has to be used for governmental activities. So until, um, we bring forward during mid-year budget to reserve that money until a spending plan is, um, decided upon for, from your board. And the possibility would be to put it in just a reserve for technology at this point, and then as we come up with something, pull it back out. But I wanted to let you know that there's a little over 3 million dollars for specifics like that.
Okay. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a real quick question on the MOU increases. I had such a lovely chat with our outgoing Otter Controller, Kathy Sagerlin, and it was like, the one thing she reinforced with me was like, we got to pay for those, we got to pay for those. And so you mentioned that the, the wage increases were handled with non-cannabis funds this year, but do we have a clear picture yet that those are big chunks? Do we know how we're going to pay for those MOU increases yet? No, stay tuned for that.
Until we have very good estimates on the actuals for the year we're in right now, which we have four months, four and a half months left, those revenue sources are the ones that would be paying for it. So the slide that had the property taxes going up and the sales tax, if those are now recognized and possibly higher next year, then the answer would be yes, we would not need cannabis, it would be taken care of with, within our own means. But if those are scheduled or projected to go down, then yes, we would, no, we would need cannabis.
You know, what are the raw dollar figures for those increases? Do you know off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't. But I can do a back of the napkin.
All right, thank you.
Is that, oh, we got another hand up, Supervisor Spatier?
I just wanted to speak on the 3 million dollars that Mr. Carter was talking about. That's due to the fact that we have, I think, over 60%, I think that's the number, of federal lands within our county, every county that has a certain percentage of federal land receive, has the ability to receive that if we ask for it. So I'm really happy that we asked for it. Can you give me the title of that again, though?
It's LATCF, Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund. If you Google it, it'll come up correctly.
I, I, I think that I want to look a little further into it. I don't, I'm not against the idea of looking at, putting some of that in reserves, um, but stuff in reserves doesn't, also provide us with leverage, and, and this has a potential that we can leverage that. I, I need to look a little further in what tribal means within that program, and, and there's a lot of work that we need done, especially if we're looking at Vision 2028, and maybe we can leverage some of those funds with other state or federal programs, as well as maybe working with some of our tribal partners to leverage the funds they have access to, so that maybe we can look at what kind of projects can be done.
Okay.
I will, I was just going to say one thing, these funds are pretty, the, the claiming requirement is between now and never, so it's as soon as we spend it, then we have to claim it, but it can take up to a decade or more before we use it, not saying it should. And it just has to be with government services, so it's not even as limited as ARPA.
Yeah, I believe that the only restriction was you can't use it for lobbying.
And just government services, which is.
Anything you want at that point.
Are we finished with this segment six? I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone in the chambers or in Zoom?
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah, come on up.
Getting back to the cannabis slide and the, the line item that said BOS discretionary funding, and I don't even know if I'm speaking to the right, in the right venue here, does that mean maybe there's a potential for a possible round of grant funding again like we've done before? And you don't have to answer, but I was just wondering if, if it's a possibility.
Well, the discretionary funding is the amount that we each get each year for projects within our districts, but Stephen, if you want to answer the other question?
You don't have to answer, I just.
Is it can grant?
There is no, there is no current plan to do that. Because there is an entire policy, if it fits under that policy, so maybe some of your activities possibly could fall under that policy, and then it would just be a standard request. If the board so chooses to re-implement, we can.
Great.
You have projects that you're considering?
I want another van. Anyway, thank you.
That was before we had a policy mainly.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing anybody in the Zoom room. I'm not seeing anybody in the Zoom room with hands up. So we'll close this item, and we're going to take a five-minute break. Come back at 2:23. I think we're ready to come back, it's 2:24. We have Supervisor Sabatier with us. He doesn't have his camera on yet. Okay. Well, he should be here anytime, maybe he's watching. We'll just get started. CAO Parker?
Yes, thank you Chair. I added this item to the agenda, and as many of you may know, for the past two years, we were eligible for federal earmarks, which our Congressman Thompson carried for us in DC. The reason I bring it up now is because some of you experienced this, that we get the notice that it's been opened and it's going to close in a very short period of time. And so I just wanted to encourage the department heads to think about projects. I'll collect them, put them on a list for the board to prioritize in the event that this funding program comes forward and march again. Now, given the state of the House of Representatives, it may not come forward, but I'd like to be prepared. Does that put PCF for everybody? But I want to share with you the type of funding programs that have previously been eligible. So agriculture, rural development, food and drug, commerce, justice, science, energy and water development, financial services and general government, homeland security, the interior and environment, labor, health and human services, education, transportation, and housing and urban development. So the armory came under homeland security, and I'm trying to remember. Middle Creek Restoration came under the Army Corps of Engineers. The Kelsey Bill came under the Safe Routes to School Program, and the Full Circle Feasibility Study, and Scott Harder, you can correct me, wasn't that through the EPA and water? Yes, okay. So it's, it's not a typical application, it's a multi-page narrative that we put together to submit and then work with the federal staff. And so it takes a lot of back and forth, and Scott Harder can, can speak to that because he spent a lot of time on phone calls, odd hours with DC quite a bit. So I just want to encourage you to think of projects that are near or at shovel-ready, and so I can make, you know, develop this list for the board's consideration. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, that was a very short item. Public input? On this? I don't see any in the chambers. I don't see any in Zoom. So then we will go to, oh, come on up.
Thank you Susan. You're saying that projects that could be near or almost shovel-ready, so this, these types, this type of funding couldn't be used for like sustaining an existing something? Or this has to be something brand new?
It does not have to be brand new, but it depends on the area of legislation it's coming from. So don't, don't say no. When we get the list, if we get the list, look through it and see if you just have to fit. It took three different applications to get the armory funded. We were trying to find the fit. Initially submitted under public facilities, which seemed to be a reasonable and rational choice, but it wasn't. So, so just keep an open mind, and when the material, if the material comes forward, I'll direct it to, forward it to all the department heads for consideration.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. Any other input? I don't see any. Okay, so then the final item is number eight, future steps discussion with the board. And did you have anything to add to this? No, okay, so this is where we decide on our priorities for the year. And I just wanted to give each supervisor, we'll go in order, Chance to speak, and so we'll start with you, Vice Chair Simon.
First of all, I just want to thank all of our directors, all the staff, the county administration for the updates today. You know, obviously, we're the ones that, as a board of supervisors, that are seen out in the community, has come to the meeting, set up here on the diocese every week, but I just want to thank you and your staff for all the hard work that's been done last year and all the years that I've sat on the board here. It's going on six, it seems like a long time now, but I just want to say thank you very much. And every time I try and speak in front of our communities, you're the folks that really need the praise for the work that gets done here in the county. We have ideas, you know, or we spit out an idea and complicate things usually, but I really just want to say how much I appreciate it. And, you know, I just did kind of three kind of small state of the county addresses in my district, one in Lower Lake, one for the Lake County Luncheon Club, and also the Middletown Area Town Hall. But just thank you for the long-term vision and taking year-by-year steps to set us up for long-term success. When I first came on in the board, I'll talk about it, my first, the CSAC rookie training, went over to Sacramento, you know, and started the training. One of the first questions was asked was, does your county have a long-term plan? Well, Lake County didn't get to raise their hand at that point, you know, and we came back with the former CEO and we started talking about at least a 10-year plan, and that's where, you know, it kind of was birthed from the, you know, the 2028, you know, long-term vision here for Lake County. I know we got a lot longer to go, but it was from 10-year to 50-year plan. So it's always great to have a plan, coming from a football standpoint, set up the game plan, you kind of follow it out, and hopefully you're successful in the end. And what I'm really encouraged about for myself, instead of adding more to the list, because we can always add projects, but it really is to talk about the five-year road plan that will be coming back to us this year. Some of the energy audit and other stuff that's being done by public services, the housing element as we're helping ourselves move forward, and being prepared when some of these funds that are thrown at us from the federal level or the state level, to be prepared with projects to help us move forward. So from my point of view, I just want to say thank you very much, and we've got plenty of work to do that is on our plate. And Mother Nature never forgets to give us something new to deal with, and as we move through that, while I sit here on the diocese, I just want to be able to help be a conduit for you when you hit a roadblock, and just continue in that manner to help you serve our constituents. So as far as priorities, I know a couple of years ago, I sat here and looked at some opportunities that may be coming down the pipe, and a lot of the things that I was concerned about, our class and comp study that we did for our employees, you know, recruitment and retention, a big thing. And like I said, the road, our five-year plan, the solar plan, you know, or solar feasibility study, and some of the studies are being done by public services and other things that are working through. I know that there's a lot already out there, and we are constantly hit with things from our constituents as we move forward, but hopefully, hopefully these plans that we're putting together for the long-term success and the viability of our communities is just going to keep moving forward. So that's really what I have to say today, you know, and I can't thank you enough for the hard work that each and every one of you do, especially during disasters, which I've experienced since I've been on the board. Sheriff Howe was hit with one with about a week, and it was the same thing for me. Was born in the fire, of the valley fire, to even run for office, but the first day, I think the first couple of weeks, I was in office, we had the 2017 floods, where our community in Hidden Valley was flooding, all across county was. So I just want to thank each and every one of you for the hard work and working towards the 2028 vision here in Lake County. I know it can always be better, and I know I could always be better, but I just want to thank you. So I appreciate today, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Supervisor Sabatier?
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to join the meeting from my home. Appreciate that very much. I, I'm going to echo some of the same sentiments that were already shared. The people who do the work are not the people that we see up on the diocese, the people who do the work are frontline workers, those organizing and understand what it actually takes to get things accomplished. We come up with ideas and say yes or no, and then it's, it's done. And so definitely appreciate the folks that are really, truly the ones behind the curtains and making things happen. Definitely need to applaud them for all their work. One of the things that we started off this conversation with was asking what has been accomplished and what are the goals based on Vision 2028? And everything that was stated are things that need to happen. I don't think there's anything that was stated that needs to be crossed off, or it's not worth putting any effort into. But some of those, I think, are just your typical things that are connected to your department and the needs of that department, not necessarily connected to a greater vision or a greater goal of Vision 2028. And I think that, that, what I did not hear a lot of was, a couple of folks mentioned it, but it wasn't as much as I had hoped, which was collaboration, because I think Vision 2028 takes collaboration. And I know when I started, there was some conversations about, there's still silos, that we still need to break down the silos and make sure we work together, whether that's between departments or between agencies, not just within the county of Lake, but working with our cities, working with our tribal counterparts, working with our nonprofits and things like that. I think we're always attempting to break those silos, but I think that's what we need to keep pushing for, is to break all those barriers, because we're not going to be able to do this on our own, it's going to have to take all of us working together. I think we have some great examples of some of those things that help us reach Vision 2028. Some of the examples I can think of is the RRA. I think that's a perfect example of bringing people together towards a greater good of making it a, not fire-safe, but a safer community to deal with climate change, to deal with the floods and the fires that we've had and the drought that we've had. I think that's a perfect example. I also like the example that was brought up even by our district attorney of the Roadmap Task Force, where that is a collaboration and a work between departments to try and get things accomplished in order to enhance the quality of life. And I think those are the types of things that I would like to see us doing and, and taking a next step on. I think this year, we're already taking that step with the housing development and the economic development. I think that's absolutely crucial. We have to have higher levels of revenues in order to continue to ask for more, because asking for more from the people who just reported to us and presented to us, what I don't know, and what they're not telling us, is at what level of capacity are they running at? Are they running at 120%? Are they running at 80%? Because I doubt many people, many departments are running less than 100%, right? I mean, we're asking a lot with huge vacancies and yet still receiving the type of work that we're looking to get out of our departments, and so that's the amazing part. We have to keep in mind, what capacity do we have to ask for more? So I think when asking for what do we want to focus on, what do we want to do, I think we need to continue to focus on housing, we need to continue on economic development, and if possible, I think this is one that I don't even know how to solve, but to offer for a larger discussion. All of this doesn't happen if we can't figure out how to provide the support that our law enforcement needs to be on the road, to be in our streets, to, to, to go after a call. Too often times, we have to triage the calls, we just don't have that many people. Too many times, we can't patrol the streets because we're going after calls. And I know that that solution is not a simple one, it's not one you pick out of thin air and then let's go with it, but I would love to hear and, and, and be a part of more conversations. I know that Supervisor Crandall and myself were having some of those discussions just recently, but again, I, I think it needs to be with the cities, with our tribal counterparts, with everyone, how, we're all in this together, how do we create a safer environment for businesses to thrive in a predictable environment and for people to live here feeling safe wherever they are? So that would be my only input that I would say on what maybe a focus should be, but definitely number one, let's keep going on the economic development and housing, I think that's crucial. But I'd love to figure out how Lake County doesn't have to keep having the same problems with law enforcement and trying to ask to do the things that we all had 20 years ago. And I get it that every department is having these issues, every state is having this issue, but there's, there's got to be something we can figure out.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Crandall?
Well, again, thank you all for coming and doing this. I know that since I've been on, we've done, we've done this annually, and, you know, it's, it's very important to stay in line with our Vision 2028, and this gives us that opportunity. It, it gives us also the opportunity to assist you while also accentuating the public's concerns, because, you know, that's basically the balance, right? We have to speak for the public, but we also know your, your limitations, so we have to be able to balance that. We can also, you know, we can always do better, and I appreciate that all of you are always keeping that uppermost in your minds. I've noticed it in these meetings, I've seen it, well, in this meeting, but also other meetings, and then even when I meet with you one-on-one, your availability to come to the specific meetings outside of this while business is usual and all of that, while also having the, the struggle with vacancies. And so it's also good to see that a lot of the departments, especially the departments that were taken over by new directors and whatnot, is working to gain stable ground to, to, to build from. So, you know, I appreciate also that a lot of the leaders are working towards, you know, or actually, they're, they're always talking about their gains and drains, you know, so I'm seeing a difference, I'm seeing everything kind of come to that, which is going to put us right in line for our trajectory for 2028. So I'll just keep it at that, I think a lot's already been said, so, yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. One of my nieces gave me a Christmas present, and it was, it was a book, Things You Can't Say Loud in a Meeting, and it was filled with paper, and I've already filled out about two pages of that. So thanks to everyone who's listened to me say things in a meeting I probably should not have, but buckle up, I'll probably do it once or twice again. Next steps, and to Supervisor Sabatier's comments about breaking down silos, I, I think that's hugely important, and I do see silos, not intentional silos necessarily, just silos that have been built by life experience, by cultural differences, by being shorthanded in your own department and not even necessarily knowing what your partner is doing one cubicle over. And so I'm going to join in that work to try to break down silos and, and occasionally challenge assumptions and poke the bear every now and then, and that's not always going to be universally popular, and it may or not, I'll be universally helpful in the go-round, but I do want to assure people this ain't my first rodeo. I have been in public settings before, I, I think I know something about driving policy change across various sectors and stuff like that, so I appreciate everyone's patience as I plod through that. In my district, in this coming year, clearly, we're going to have some unanticipated challenges with this county's response to the Clear Lake Hitch situation. I spoke previously in the previous item about our need to get a sustainable cannabis program. We've made lots of strides in recent years, but when I talk about opportunity cost and reaching sustainability moving forward, clearly, there's a lot of work to be done. And so I'm, I'm very much looking forward to the Cannabis Task Force continuing its work, and I hope some meaningful progress can be made on that front. Also mentioned was collaboration. As I went to the rookie CSAC training and got informed that collaboration is hell, yeah, it kind of is, but that's why, that's why we're here. So I appreciate, again, everyone who's been patient with me so far in my rookie role, but hopefully that patience will allow me to make the moves that I think necessary for the district. If there was one project that is nowhere close to being shovel-ready, but is probably going to be a point of emphasis moving forward this year, it would be the Adobe Creek Conjunctive Use Project, and I hope to get some updates on that and hopefully some clever ideas on what we can do to goose that this year. One thing that highlights this is just how much progress we can make, but these are on these long, multi-year arcs. Rapid response is so much harder for this county, for our state agencies, for our local stakeholder groups and all that. So the ability to absorb and react in real time to situations is probably something that we continue to struggle with as a county, I continue to struggle with, our ability to process and adapt to change is. Our ability to process and adapt to change is limited. So I just, another point of emphasis will be when you get something dumped on your desk and you didn't expect it to get there this year, please roll with the punches. We're encountering these issues in real time, just like you are, and we're trying to do our very best to move ahead in a productive way. So thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Sabatier had one more thing to add.
Thank you so much, Chair Pisca. I apologize that I missed this point. I wanted to ask, because it's really difficult to note, what has been the true progress between one year and another? We can speak of bullet points list of items that have been accomplished, but it's difficult for me without seeing any trends or data, and let me rephrase that, with not enough trends or not enough data. There were some people that provided, some directors that provided some data to be able to say between last year and this year, this was the difference. I would love to see that, and I would love to see if the board wants this as a next step, is to challenge our directors, what are the measurables that are important to the department, rather than the Board of Supervisors saying, here are the measurables that are important to us, because they know what's the easiest to collect versus if we come up with something, it could be absolutely difficult for them to find and put together. Of course, we could always add on or take away, saying that's not important to us, or yes, that's important, we need to add it on. But I feel without data, that the conversations of Vision 2028, we can't truly speak of where we were in 2018 and how much better we're doing in 2028 if we don't start the collection of data with consistent measurables to be able to compare and contrast how we have done. So that's my last comment that I wanted to make and seeing if the board, how the board feels about that.
Okay, thank you. I, when I had my first governance board meeting, we did things a little differently. We each had a presentation that year, and we talked about the things that we wanted to prioritize. And so many of the things that we prioritized at that time were continuing to work on, and that's probably the measurables that you want to track, Supervisor Sabatier. We talked about the Economic Development Task Force, we talked about housing, we talked about, or the need for housing, we talked about the economic development strategy that we needed, we came up with the Roadmap Task Force. All of those things, we set in motion two years ago, and we are continuing with that work. We've laid the groundwork, we've put the wheels in motion, and this looks like a year that we're going to see implementation on a lot of those priorities. So maybe we can have that as a measure next year. But I'm really excited about 2023 because of all of this work that I've got to help foster over the last couple of years. But there are a couple of things that I just want to really highlight. The tree mortality disaster that we're facing, that I've been working on for well over a year, is, you know, it's a hard one, and we're not recreating the wheel. We're using and leaning on the other counties that have done it, but it's just not something that happens in real time. When you're collaborating with multiple stakeholders, multiple agencies, it takes time, and it has to be a very thoughtful, methodical process to work through something that is this large. And so we are in the process of preparing our CalOES application for that funding that's going to help us with those trees. And unfortunately, I have some bad news that we're not going to get support with the 25% match that we, that I have been pushing for the last nine months, since I found out about it last May, or whatever amount of months that is. I was really hoping that we could get that match that CAL FIRE had provided counties in the past, and it's not going to happen. And I just got that news, I think it was two weeks ago. It doesn't mean that I'm not still looking for other funding to augment that, but the reality is, is that we're going to have to pay a significant amount of money to deal with this public safety issue and to deal with this hazard, and it's likely going to have to come out of cannabis funds. So I want to put that out there so that everybody can just start understanding that, yes, we have this disaster, this emergency that's happening, we've been working on it for a long time, but we are going to have to, we're going to have to allocate funds to that. Now that said, looking at a lot of other grant opportunities and funding opportunities, which could augment that work down the road, but because we have this application that's being prepared, we're going to have to target kind of the most dangerous places right away when we get through that. And we're still waiting to hear back from our contractor on those timelines. So I just need the board to be aware of that, and I really hope that we'll be able to support this work going forward. Along with that is we have to continue with the fuels management and the biomass that is literally building up all over our county. So you know, we have our Climate Resiliency Officer here working on that, we are building collaboratives, we have done the, this year was, this year was incredible with the collaboration that happened, not just with the Risk Reduction Authority, that continues to happen through the community and coming up, but with the Climate Safe Grant Application that we put together in the cities and the tribes, and all of us just recognizing this need that we have to co-manage the entire region of the county across jurisdictions. So that work that began, even though that grant was unsuccessful, it's the beginning of something. It's the beginning of something really special and really important. And now everyone has brought up the collaborative nature we have here. It's embedded in all of us, it's part of us, but to really be able to act on that, it takes a lot, a lot of trust. And to build that trust, we have to have strong relationships. And that, and that always has to be the biggest, you know, the thing that I value the most when we're doing this big work, is to know that we've got the relationships, but we have to protect them, because collaboratives are fragile. And so just, we have to keep that in the back of our mind as we work together. So I want to share that the Resource Conservation District has hired a grant writer who helped build the Resource Conservation District in Mendocino County and the Fire Safe Council. And that's been a priority that we've been working on for the last couple of years, certainly Vice Chair Simon and I have, but it's something that I continue to bring to this board. And then two years ago, we changed Vision 2028 to talk about disaster preparedness and prevention and mitigation, and that language got put into Vision 2028. And so this, this work that's going to be happening, it's going to be about a three-year project to build both of those agencies up so they can stand alone and also work with us and be part of the county, the extensions of the county, to help us with grant work and project work and CWPP and all of these things that we have prioritized, but we have not had the capacity to do. And there have been missing links that have become really clear to everybody. And so the links are coming together, and this is not a monetary ask for the board, but I do ask that we support this development of the RCD and the Fire Safe Council and get your support, because this is going to be a project that will really benefit the county and all of our communities. And then I would just like to go back to what Vice Chair Simon said about the class and comp. And I think the next thing that we need to look at are the benefit packages and insurance. And I know we've lost several really amazing candidates just recently because of our insurance. So I'm hoping that that's something that we can continue, that work, and that will really, you know, that strengthens our workforce and our people are our greatest assets, and if they're having trouble caring for their families, then we all have a problem. The very last thing, I want to change the Vision 2028 a little bit again, because we need to keep this a living document, a living guide, and I would like to invite up our Chief Climate Resiliency Officer, because I do, we need to keep working towards, working towards our Climate Action Plan, really. And so recognizing all the areas where we need climate resiliency throughout all of our departments and throughout our communities, and then to embed that in our Vision 2028. So she made some tweaks, want to share it with you, and then we can think about it and act on it a little bit later.
Okay, great. Can you hear me? Yeah, my understanding is, of course, you can't take any action today. So I drafted this, and I don't know if it'll be very effective just to read through it, but pretty much put climate change, climate adaptation into each of the items. And so I'm looking forward to your board discussing that in the future. What is your preference? Would you like me to just read some of the suggestions?
Yeah, if you could just read it, I think we all have a really good understanding of what's there, but if she reads through it, you'll hear just a little, a few little changes. And the reason why we did it this way is, is because climate is just not a one line, it's not a tagline. It is multiple threads that run through all of the work that we do. So yeah, go ahead and read it.
Okay, great. And number one, consider and promote the well-being and economic, oops, and, see, that's what I get for doing the red line version, the well-being of every Lake County resident to include resilience and economic prosperity and adaptation to climate change. There's no changes in number two. And three, continue rebuilding and all efforts to recover from our recent disasters and increase planning for resiliency in a changing climate. And four, the second bullet point, develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness, recovery, and climate adaptation in collaboration with community. So it's things like that, just adding that in every section. On five, add a new section that says, expand renewable energy and four stewardship projects that protect and preserve the quality of life for all. And number six, add local renewable energy. As Supervisor Pisca mentioned, we have more waste woody biomass, as we are all aware of, than we know what to do with. So I'm looking for grants and things that can utilize that. And that's really, I don't think I've made any changes to the last one, but that's just an example. Thank you.
So I guess this is where we can kind of discuss what we have brought up with each other and have an opportunity to dialogue. If anybody wants to start or not? Okay, so do we have consensus to bring back the Vision 2028 to make some minor adjustments to incorporate climate?
Yes.
Okay.
Ask too about the data or something along those lines?
Trying to figure out how to unmute. I know I know how to do this. I had two requests. One was to get some measurables, some data points, to be able to see trends and really track on our progress. And also, I don't know, what can we do to do one of the identified vision goals, which is public safety, enhance public safety? And I know we're doing the Roadmap Task Force, but I think that we can have all the plans in the world without staffing, and if we're, I want to open up a discussion on how we can work better together to make things happen for that.
And then, well, the other thing I had was the class and comp direction. So if that's something that you want to see back again?
Yeah, absolutely, on the class comp, something that we talked about, you know, as a board for the last couple of years, the benefit packages and, you know, what can be done? I know we took some baby steps forward with a couple of things, but yes, I want to continue that conversation.
I would just add to that, yeah, totally open benefit packages, big, huge thing, especially for couples and people with children. But our lower salary ranges are suffering from the McDonald's phenomenon, so I'll make sure we can talk about wages, too. Some of those lower ranges are already pretty problematic, so I think we need to talk all of it as part of the compensation. Some of our wage scales are just not keeping up, and I think that may be an even bigger issue than the compensation package for some people.
May I ask a few points of clarification, please? So we can bring back the Vision 2028 on the 14th? All right. And as far as the measurables, Supervisor Sabatier, do you want that in the budget process, or were you thinking of something outside of the budget process, or do you want it developed before the next annual? Your thoughts?
Well, you know, I don't want to make it rushed. I know that everybody's got a lot on their plates. I think that it would be, I don't know, maybe the possibility of a committee to kind of sit down with department heads and figure out what the measurables are, and then eventually bring it back to the board. And I'd say if we can get that back to the board by the end of the year, I'm fine. I don't think it has to be by budget time, but there needs to be a way for us to start being able to track, are we doing better this year than last year, or better today than we did five years ago? I think those are good transparency metrics to help people understand what we've accomplished and what we've gotten done.
Thank you. And on the item of public safety, did you want the Sheriff's Department to bring something forward, or did you have other thoughts on that?
You know, I think that one's just such a big topic. Let me have, continue the discussions that I've started with Supervisor Crandall and Sheriff Howe, and let's see what is best to move forward on and bring it to the board at that time when it's a little bit more fleshed out.
Thank you. And on the class and comp, and I'm going to look at Pam, because I know we've already been talking about health insurance and benefits. Do you have a timeline to bring this back to the, something back to the board? Or thoughts?
I have thoughts.
Please.
Well, it was my understanding, the direction from the board was to kind of wait and see how our tax situation materialized to determine whether or not we would bring it back to the board. So I'm assuming soon, like within the next...
60 days?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yes, within the next 60 days to bring back a proposal at looking at some benefit adjustments.
So if it's not 60 days, you need to tell us now. Is there more time you'd like, or?
No, I think that's sufficient. I think I need to work with Stephen and looking at what we can afford to do and make some proposals to bring back to the board.
And so that would be the end of March, and that will help with budgeting if any decisions are made?
Yes.
Okay.
And then lastly, I'll just remind you that you need to take public input.
Yes, correct. I did bring up the Climate Action Plan. I know that that is a long, long process, and we did hear from Community Development that steps are being made in that direction, and I think it's a long-term, well, not a very long-term goal, but I don't think it's something that we can accomplish this year, but I do want to keep bringing it up.
Can I comment on that?
Yes, go ahead.
So I know that Director Turner spoke about doing the area plans, because the area plans need to be updated in order to get to the general plan. As soon as we touch the general plan, at that point, it has to be done. So I think it's, I think it's good to make sure that we update the general plan at the same time that we do the cap, or else then if we don't have the area plans done before that, that it just seems like it's already in the order of operations to get done and accomplished. Yes, unfortunately, it is a little further in the distance, but I think that it's exactly where it needs to be as far as the steps in order to get to it.
Right. Director Turner?
Thank you. Yeah, the Climate Action Plan, we may, we find that we become well-informed once we conclude the climate vulnerability analysis, but Supervisor Sabatier is correct, I don't have Climate Action Plan on this year or next year.
Okay. And what's the...
Hey, I serve at the pleasure of the board, so y'all let me know. I need to juggle around my top priorities.
Well, what is the timeline for the climate... But what is the timeline for the climate vulnerability survey?
I have that for 2023 and 2024.
Okay. So I think that?
I'm one before, so I'm not actually sure how long it takes.
Right, okay. Any other comments or questions from the board before I take public comment? Okay, I will open it up to the public in the chambers or in the Zoom room. I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so I will close public input. And do we have any final comments before we adjourn? No, okay. And this meeting is adjourned.